Good evening. It's approximately 6:03 and I'm going to call this meeting to order. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Burbank Planning Commission on Monday, April 24th, 2023. Before we begin our meeting, there will be a general period of public comment tonight during oral communications. Persons speaking during the general public comment period may provide the Planning Commission oral communication on any matter concerning city business. Members of the public may comment in person or by telephone during the general public comment period. If you would like to participate in the public comment period by making an in-person comment, please present a completed speaker card to the planning staff. If you would like to participate in the public comment period by telephone, please call 818-238-3335. We will announce when the phone lines are open. We will start with an invocation and I'll lead us in our flag salute. If you all please stand.
Mark Twain once said, "He wakes up in the morning and he checks the obituaries, and if he's not in there, it's going to be a good day." Every day is important. Every day is precious. Today is more important than the day before, but not as important as the next day. Keep that in mind. Live. Be happy. Be thankful.
Please join me in saluting our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, could we have the roll call?
Chair Rosati.
I am here.
Vice Chair Atikkinian. Commissioner Elrich.
Present.
Commissioner Monaco.
Present.
Commissioner Wick.
Present.
Thank you. Do we have any announcements from city staff?
No new announcements.
There are two public hearings on tonight's agenda. Item number one, now is the time and the place for the public hearing on item project number 22-004305, a conditional use permit to operate a restaurant/drinking establishment, Magnolia Corner, and an administrative use permit to allow a reduction in parking at 2623 West Magnolia Boulevard. Before we begin, do any planning board members have any legal, financial, or other conflict of interest regarding this hearing?
No.
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 No. Have any planning board members had any communications, including written, oral, with any person about this project?
No.
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 I will say that many members of the public have reached out to me via email and text message about this meeting tonight, and I told them they should come and present their concerns. And one person gave me their concerns via text, and I'll read that during the course of the evening. Mr. Ramirez, have the notices as required been law been given?
Yes, they have.
Are there any written communications on this matter?
It's just been via phone unless there's something that was submitted directly to the commission.
Okay. Would that be appropriate for me to read that, or do you want me to?
You can incorporate it into the records.
Got it. Will the representative of the Community Development Department please introduce herself and summarize the matter for us?
Good evening, Chairman Rosati, members of the board. May I please have the presentation? Thank you. My name is Joseph Anibuchi. I'm an associate planner with the Planning Division of the Community Development Department. For your consideration, tonight is project number 22-0004305, an application for a conditional use permit and administrative use permit at the proposed Magnolia Corner Restaurant located at 2623 West Magnolia Boulevard. The applicant is applying for a CUP and an AUP concurrently, and therefore pursuant to Burbank Municipal Code Section 10-1-1909.2C, Planning Commission approval of the AUP is required. The project applicant is Wayne Liu, and he's in attendance tonight along with the owner. The project site is located at 2623 West Magnolia Boulevard, outlined in red on the aerial photograph. The 4,253 square foot site is located at the corner of West Magnolia Boulevard and North Naomi Street. The site is developed with a 1,628 square foot single story building and a paved lot located behind the building. The project site has a corridor commercial general plan land use designation, which is shaded in pink. The general plan land use designation is intended to provide for neighborhood and community-serving commercial businesses appropriate to a pedestrian-oriented environment. The site is surrounded by properties that have a low-density residential land use designation, and this general plan land use designation is used for neighborhoods with single-family residential dwellings that are envisioned to be free from adverse effects of surrounding land uses. The project site is located within the Magnolia Park General Business Zone, referred to as the MPC3 Zone. The MPC3 Zone is intended for general commercial uses that provide goods and services to the surrounding residential areas and for office and mixed-use complexes that are compatible with adjacent land uses. The site and the commercial corridor it is located within is adjacent to R1 single-family residential neighborhoods. The use has been the site of a neighborhood-serving restaurant since 1939, and patrons to the establishment have been from the surrounding residential neighborhood. The Magnolia Park commercial corridor is characterized by wide sidewalks and low-lying commercial retail buildings, allowing for an attractive retailing experience. This is a photo of the existing building taken from West Magnolia Boulevard. The applicant is proposing a restaurant/drinking establishment at this location. Pursuant to Burbank Municipal Code Section 10-1-1116.1, Planning Commission approval of a CUP is required for any establishment proposing to sell alcoholic beverages for on-premises or off-premises consumption. Therefore, the application is subject to the approval of a CUP. Approval of the CUP would allow the applicant to use a Type 47 alcohol license, permitting the onsite sale of beer, wine, and distilled spirits for onsite consumption, and the onsite sale of beer and wine for off-site consumption. A restaurant-drinking establishment is required to provide 10 spaces per 1,000 square feet of gross floor area. Pursuant to Burbank Municipal Code Section 10-1-14081H, approval of an AUP would allow a parking reduction to 3.3 spaces per 1,000 square feet. The applicant is applying for the AUP and the CUP concurrently. Therefore, pursuant to BMC Section 10-1-1909.2C, Planning Commission approval of the AUP is required. The existing single-story restaurant building, highlighted in blue, has a total floor area of 1,628 square feet, which includes a bar, kitchen, and seating area. A corrugated metal roof currently covers a portion of the outdoor patio that is shaded in yellow. The proposed single-story restaurant building, highlighted in blue, has a total floor area of 1,708 square feet, which includes the proposed 80-square-foot dry storage area located within the side yard. The project proposes a reduction in the outdoor patio space to 400 square feet, highlighted here in yellow. Since January 2017, Burbank PD has received 117 calls for service at this site, and I will speak in more detail about these calls for service later in this presentation. To protect the surrounding residential neighborhood noise impacts, staff recommends a condition of approval that the outdoor seating area close at 10:00 PM daily, and there be no music or amplified sound allowed outside the premises at any time. The restaurant is proposed to operate from 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM, Monday through Sunday. As mentioned, staff recommends a condition of approval requiring the outdoor patio close at 10:00 PM daily to ensure that potential disturbance to the adjacent residential neighborhood is kept to a minimum. The sale of beer, wine, and distilled spirits is proposed to take place within the restaurant's proposed operating hours only, with alcohol service proposed to end 30 minutes before closing. The proposed use would operate similarly to other commercial uses in the surrounding neighborhood and other permitted restaurant-drinking establishments in the city, meaning that there will be a designated area for eating, a kitchen to prepare and serve food, as well as a small bar area. The project proposes three parking spaces onsite and two parking spaces located at an off-site location approximately 300 feet from the project site. The site is approximately 4,253 square feet and has accommodated a restaurant use since 1939. Before the CUP was revoked, the previous restaurant-drinking establishment operated within the existing 1,628 square foot building and had no onsite parking. The lot is approximately 38 feet 6 inches wide and cannot accommodate the required number of parking spaces. The relatively small size of the lot and the existing building would make adherence to the parking requirement impractical. Furthermore, the site has historically operated successfully without onsite parking. The reduction in the parking requirement would reduce the required parking provided onsite to five spaces. And the applicant has proposed three spaces onsite, shaded here in red, located at the rear of the property and accessed by the alley. Staff recommends a condition of approval requiring the onsite parking spaces be designated as parking for patrons only. The applicant has also secured parking off-site through an informal parking agreement that will be memorialized with the city as a condition of approval. The agreement allows the applicant to reserve two spaces exclusively for patrons of the restaurant-drinking establishment. The donor parking site is located at 811 North Buena Vista. If the Planning Commission approves the administrative use permit, the project would meet the parking space requirement with three parking spaces proposed onsite and agreement to provide two parking spaces offsite. Staff recommends a condition of approval that a sign be posted onsite indicating that additional parking is provided offsite within the surface parking lot located at 811 North Buena Vista Street. Public notice for this Planning Commission hearing was provided in accordance with state and local laws. Several calls in support of the project were received as of tonight's hearing, with one call received expressing opposition to the proposed use. I believe you mentioned that, Chairman, you mentioned that you had received some calls and texts about the project tonight as well. No other comments have been received via mail, email, or telephone as of tonight's hearing. Staff has determined that allowing a Type 47 ABC license at this project's site would be consistent with the city's zoning code regarding the type of use allowed in the MPC3 Zone and the purpose of commercial corridor general plan land use designation by facilitating a neighborhood-serving commercial use, the re-establishment of a restaurant-drinking establishment at the project site, subject to the recommended conditions of approval. There are similar retail uses in the vicinity of the site, and furthermore, the site has accommodated a restaurant use serving the surrounding community since 1939. Staff reviewed the application and found that pursuant to Burbank Municipal Code 10-1-1936, the application satisfies the findings for a CUP. As discussed previously, the applicant has requested an administrative use permit to reduce the parking requirement from 10 spaces per 1,000 to 3.3 spaces per 1,000 square feet of gross floor area. Based on the code requirement and the parking policy for outdoor dining, 17 spaces would be required. Approval of an AUP would reduce the onsite parking requirement from 17 to five parking spaces. Staff has determined that allowing the reduction in required parking for this project's site would not be detrimental to the surrounding residential community or commercial corridor. During high-volume evening hours, ample parking will exist along Magnolia Boulevard, and the site, as mentioned previously, has operated since 1939 as a restaurant use and more recently as a restaurant-drinking establishment with no onsite parking. Staff reviewed the application and found that pursuant to Burbank Municipal Code 10-1-1956, the application satisfies the findings for an AUP. As mentioned previously, the previous restaurant business tenant had their CUP revoked due to numerous and repeated violations of the Los Angeles County Health Officer's orders during the COVID pandemic. Additionally, Burbank PD received 117 calls for service to the site over a five-year period from January 2017 to today. Between January 2017 and March 13th, 2020, which is the date of the LA County Health Officer issued, when the LA County Health Officer issued a local state of emergency due to COVID, Burbank PD received 35 calls for service. This translates to about an average of one call a month. Of those 35 calls, 12 were due to public disturbance, with the remainder spanning reported calls for drunken, disorderly, suspicious activity, and burglar alarm calls. While 82 of the 117 calls were received after the declared state of emergency, staff cannot speculate as to whether those calls are not related to the complaints received by the LA County Department of Public Health. When the proposed operators for the new Magnolia Corner Restaurant submitted their application, staff explained the site history detailing the numerous calls for service and violations associated with this site to the new owners. Through numerous conversations with those owners, staff has set a clear expectation around what will constitute a neighborhood-serving establishment that operates as a respectful neighbor and does not violate any of the proposed conditions of approval. It is staff's assessment that the proposed conditions of approval provide sufficient safeguards to operate a neighborhood-serving use of this type while mitigating impacts to the surrounding neighborhood and land uses. Due to the negative impacts the previous tenants' actions posed to the surrounding community, staff recommends additional conditions of approval to ensure the use does not negatively impact the surrounding neighborhood. Those conditions include, but are not limited to, the outdoor patio closing at 10:00 PM daily, excessive nuisance calls to the establishment may result in revocation of the CUP, no outdoor music or amplified noise, no loitering or public drinking signs shall be posted inside and outside the facility, no light spill over from the project's site to neighboring property, and ongoing maintenance of offsite parking for the life of the project. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission find that the project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Section 15301, Class 1 of the State Secret Guidelines pertaining to an existing facility and the negligible expansion of an existing use. The Class 1 categorical exemption is applicable because the project involves minor interior changes to the restaurant floor plan to accommodate alcohol storage and minor exterior alterations. Minor changes to the onsite parking facility and the nature of the current operations as neighborhood-serving restaurants will remain the same. Therefore, there are no unusual circumstances that would preclude the use of this exemption. As previously noted, the proposed request to secure a CUP for a restaurant-drinking establishment and an AUP for a reduction in the parking requirement is consistent with the city's zoning code requirements and consistent with the general plan land use designation by providing a neighborhood-serving commercial use that is complementary to the surrounding residential and commercial land uses without creating a potential adverse impact to the public health, safety, and welfare. Therefore, staff recommends the Planning Commission approve the CUP and the AUP applications based on the determination that all the required findings can be made for project number 22-0004305 and adopt the attached resolution with the proposed conditions of approval. This concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions the commission may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anibuchi. I will now invite the applicant and their representative to address the planning board. You'll have a maximum time of 15 minutes to make your
Honorable councilman, sorry, honorable chairman, councilman, and congressional, city staff, and community members of Burbank, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Wayne, and this is Stevie. I would like to tell you the story of this project. Basically, Stevie one day was driving through the neighborhood on his way, and he saw that this location was closed. He'd seen it before. He remembers this location. It was not too small, not too big, perfect for his first restaurant, his shot at opening his first restaurant. So he asked around, and eventually he found the owner of the property, who was pretty much now stuck with a vacant lot because the previous operator of Tin Horn Flats has pretty much vacated. So he asked her, "Would you be interested in selling this to me?" And she said, "Sure. Why not? It's not doing me any good." So he got his wife's permission, got his friend, and they decided to join together and jump into this project feet first. And they made the acquisition of this site. So this is their dream, to have always opened a restaurant. And in this dream, opening a restaurant is not an easy task, let alone this being their first restaurant that they're opening. And it will take a tremendous amount of effort for them to make this restaurant successful. They're not a big brand name that can attract regional draw. They don't have a famous chef that's coming on board like Gordon Ramsay, who people will come to see eat his food. They're just a family business. And a new restaurant, in this case, it will be a bistro, is very challenging, especially in this economic market. So I hope the commission will find it to help them succeed, because they know that they're going to be a member of this community, a community that he once belonged to a long time ago. And they know that their traffic is going to come from the neighboring residential and businesses, because that's who's going to support his restaurant, the businesses that are open during the daytime to eat lunch there. And as it draws into the evening, the local families from the local places will walk to his restaurant to hopefully have their dinner. He knows very well that he has to be a good member of society, of this community, because that is where his patrons are going to come from, the local businesses and the local residents. So I hope the council will help him succeed. And I just want to make it abundantly clear, he has no relations to the previous owner. This is a brand-new business, and I hope he is not penalized for the sins of the previous owner. And I would like to turn the floor over to Stevie, so he officially can introduce himself and welcome you guys to hopefully his future restaurant.
Thank you guys so much for having me, and my wife, and my child over here. Really appreciate the time. So just a little bit backstory like on myself and on my wife. Originally, I was born in Sw-
Will you just step right up to that microphone, sir?
Sorry. Originally, I was born in Switzerland, in Beale, and my wife is born in Nepal. And a small story is, back when I was in Switzerland going to school, I used to always take the train. We used to train, bus, everywhere. And so on my train rides back and forth from school and coming home, I used to travel through this big Bonhof, the train station. And as we come through the train station, there's all these restaurants and kiosks and things selling things. And I remember telling myself as I was walking through this, years and years and years and years, "I wish, I wish, I wish, one day I can open a restaurant." Something like, same thing like this. It's been like kind of a dream since maybe I was 13, 14 years old. And fast forward to now, maybe, or a year and a half, two years ago, when I saw the location open, I knew about the location because in 2015, I used to live on Clark Street over here by the, I think it's the high school. And I lived there for about three years, and so I used to drive by it all the time. And then one day, after we moved to Monrovia, I said, "You know, let's drive by over there. Let's go look." When I drove by, I saw it was all gated up, and I was like, "Huh, that's odd. Why is this place all, you know, gated up?" And with further, you know, looking into it, I found out what had happened and everything, and I thought to myself, "Wow," you know, I was telling her, "Wow, you know, this could be something that, about my dream, that we can make a reality. We can make something, you know, neighborhoodly, and the place that, you know, we can walk to and go have some food and a drink with our friends and/or neighbors or whoever." And so fast forward to now, we had the opportunity to purchase it. It's been, it's been really, really, I mean, I'm not like, how you would say, a regular investor that comes into the restaurant business and they've got millions of dollars backing it. This was a pipe dream for me one day. And it's a dream that it's come to almost a reality with a lot of work. And I don't know how many times I've spoken to my wife, and I've told her, because it's taken so long, and obviously I'm paying a mortgage on this place and stuff, and I've told her, "I don't know if we're going to be able to make this work, right?" And so just even getting to this point, whether or not it's approved or declined or whatever, even getting to this point has been an amazing experience for me and for her, because it's brought us to at least the point where we've purchased the place. You know, maybe it's not a restaurant yet, but it's right there for us. So we've kind of put all our eggs in one basket, more than all our eggs, because I had a, luckily, we had a good friend of ours that also has a young child, and we hang out a lot, and he was like, "Yeah, let's do it together," you know? So with that combination, we had enough funds to make the project work and to have it weather a year and a half of, you know, trying to get to this point, which has been, you know, pretty eye-opening and amazing, to be honest. So fast forward to today, we hope that, really, that we, you know, have an opportunity to actually open it and show the community that we really just want to have a community restaurant where everyone can come hang out, you know, have some food, have a drink, and then walk home. And hopefully, after today, you know, we can, we can say soon enough we'll have that. So, oh, and another thing is, if it all goes well, we're, obviously, we want to plan to move back to Burbank. We obviously love the city, and we don't want to drive back and forth to our business. So we'd love to obviously move back here and join the community again and really be part of what we're talking about. So thank you guys so much for the opportunity.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. We will now open up the public hearing to speak for any persons who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the Planning Commission for a maximum time of three minutes. For members of the public who wish to comment in person, please present a completed speaker card to the Planning Division staff. If you wish to speak by telephone, please call 818-238-3335 to address the planning board. Callers will be placed in a queue until all persons' comments have been received. The phone lines are now open. Please bear with us as we get the first few callers through. For callers, please remember to lower the volume on your TV or your computer, and take the phone off speaker when you deliver your Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers tonight? Let's see, we do.
And we have one caller.
No callers?
One caller.
Okay. Why don't we go ahead and let's have the caller.
Our next caller is Alessandra Valdez.
Good evening.
Hi. I apologize. I'd like to call this on the, should I call back later? Sorry.
I didn't get any of that.
I'm trying to comment. Next item on the agenda.
Got it.
Call back later.
Mr. David Donahue, come on up to the microphone, please. Hold on one second. I got, my mic is on. Check, check. There you go, there you go. Okay. Three minutes, please. I appreciate that. Chair Rosati and fellow commissioners, thank you very much for the opportunity to talk in front of you, talk to you tonight. It was not my intent to speak on this particular issue, but it just so happens that Tin Horn Flats is within walking distance. It is a very short, very close to our- It is a very short, very close to our house. And like, uh, the applicant has said, hi, he was, as he's very welcoming to the community. I hope that that is the intent. Uh, I hope that, and I also appreciate the fact that staff did mention that there are gonna be, they're gonna be looking at any sort of complaints. But I have to tell you, the energy and the enthusiasm from the young man and him being here, I'm excited to see what he might bring to Burbank to kind of make it a, a little bit more exciting place on Magnolia. So, thank you very much. Thank you. Uh, Ms. French?
Hello, thank you for letting me speak. Um, I basically represent the ladies of Naomi Street. Uh, there's a group of us, we live on Naomi, right down the street between Magnolia and Clark. We get together every year for Christmas, have a big Christmas party. Um, I was able, on one of my walks, I met Mr. Too and accosted him basically and said, are you gonna be the new owner? And we spoke, I met his wife, at that time, it was a brand-new baby. And I went back and told the ladies at the Christmas party, I had the big scoop on what was gonna happen at Tin Horn Flats. Everyone was thrilled. We need local neighborhood businesses, a restaurant like this gentleman just mentioned, that we can walk to again, we can bring friends when they come over. Um, and as you know, Magnolia Park itself is real slim on restaurants. I think you can count how many there are on one hand. And, um, I think it's wonderful if he is given the chance. Whatever happened before, happened before, that was a shame. And it was embarrassing for those of us who did live on Naomi Street and in that area. And we're really looking forward to a new business that we can, um, all go to and, uh, um, bring our kids to, everything. So, um, thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Goulding?
Hello, um, my name is Diana Goulding. And I am a resident or adjacent behind and across the street. Um, I am excited to see this new project coming in. Um, the neighborhood, I have a few concerns, but I see that the staff report has really addressed a lot of our concerns. Um, one that is left out is filming. This has had a history, sometimes, once a month.
And, and you had that first part, filming?
Filming, sometimes the studio is rented out, once a month, once every six months, once a week. I mean, it varies on how often it rents out as, and it's nowhere mentioned about this. Sometimes it's just a few hours, a day or two, sometimes it takes over the neighborhood for a week. So, my family has owned a house there for, since the seventies. So we've seen the history of multiple owners, some better than others. My one biggest concern is always parking, littering, loitering, um, sometimes sports in the streets, you know? Um, we understand some of it's, you know, uh, part of the neighborhood, but we wanna make sure it's safe, we wanna make sure that kids can be in that neighborhood. Since it's been closed, parking, everything, cleaning, everything's been a breeze. But we do wanna encourage a business, we understand that the owner wants to start new. But we just wanna make sure that some of these are addressed by their own employees, by some of the, of course, um, people visiting the establishment. And we hope they do do community, um, draw.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Beck?
Thank you, Chair Rosati, council members, thank you. Uh, I am also a resident of Burbank, and I also live on Naomi, I believe, right across the street from Diana. Uh, I'm excited to hear that it is just a bistro going in and not another Tin Horn Flats Part Two. Um, we do need more restaurants and businesses in, in Burbank and Magnolia Park. Uh, my biggest concern is parking. Uh, as of right now, I already have to strategically move my car around every day to make sure that I have parking in front of my own home. Uh, on trash takeout day, we have to move our cars or move our cans in front of our neighbor's home. So, parking is a major concern. And I understand that that's been, uh, addressed in the planning committee, but I don't feel that five spots is sufficient for, uh, an establishment that size. Um, so I'm hoping that if it is approved, and I hope that it is approved, uh, maybe the permitting requirements on Naomi are changed such that it's, uh, right now, I think it's two hours without permit. I'd like to see it permitting all day with parking on Magnolia Park only, if possible. Uh, there are other restaurants in Magnolia Park that have provided parking, either on the premises or around the corner. But as we know, people go to the path of least resistance and they find parking wherever it's available. So, if that's right in front of a home or, or in front of the business, they're gonna park there, they're not gonna drive a street over to look for two extra parking spots. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. So, Madam City Attorney, can I read into the record, uh, an email that I received? As a public comment?
Yes.
The major concern in the neighborhood is parking. Permitted parking past ten o'clock. I'm trying to make sense of the email. Uh, we wish to have permitted parking through the evening. At the moment, there's only one hour of parking on our street. Uh, we have had many issues with employees having, uh, parked in front of our house for hours and hours. Uh, patrons that have been intoxicated, leaving their cars for several, either one night or several nights, sleeping in their cars, having sex in their cars, um, leaving condoms on our lawn, vomiting on our property, lawns and garden beds. Um, and please try to explain that to your children. I think it's important for law enforcement to be monitoring during business hours and respond quickly, um, to ensure that the neighborhoods are protected. Parking restrictions should be beefed up and enforced up and down Na- Naomi, not the first few houses. Thank you. Any, uh, other comments?
We have two callers on hold.
Thank you. They don't have to give their name. But I will forward the email to staff, so they have it for the record. Uh, let's hear from caller one.
Lynda Griffin, you are now live with the planning commission.
Good evening.
Hi, thank you, thank you so much for allowing us to, um, pipe in on, on this, uh, occasion of something new coming to Burbank. I think it's very exciting. I live off of Magnolia on Myers. Um, and as so many have said, we don't have a lot of opportunities to just walk and have a wonderful meal and possibly a drink and a glass of wine with dinner. And I just love what these two gentlemen have presented to the commission. Um, I understand some of the parking issues, but I think that Tin Horn Flats was a very different operation, a very different vibe than what these, uh, people are trying to do here in the neighborhood. And it just sounds to me like something that would really be a welcome entity and a welcome business and something that we can all feel really good about, just walking to and being a part of the community. So, I just wanted to, you know, express my support and, and wish them well.
Thank you for your call.
Thank you.
Next caller?
Jeffrey, you are now live with the planning commission.
My name is Jeff, and I am a resident of Burbank. I wanted to say that I've never had any problem parking there on Magnolia in front of Mamie's or across the street. And I wanted to welcome Steven and his family to the neighborhood and wish them well and say that I can't wait for this bistro to open. And I wanted to ask the commission about the parking regulation and the new parking spaces behind the restaurant. I just wanted to know why that's required if it wasn't required of the business that was there previously. Thank you.
Thank you for your call.
No more callers.
No more callers. There being no other callers, I now declare the public comment period closed. Would the representative of the community development department like to make any further comments?
Uh, we have no further comments at this time.
Thank you, sir. Does the applicant or the representative wish to make any further comments?
Only that I, I hear everyone-
Come, come up to the microphone, sir.
Only that I hear, um, everyone's concern. And I promise one hundred percent to address it and make sure that none of these things happen. Uh, if it has to do with myself, if I'm picking up stuff by myself, but I will make sure one hundred percent, these experiences don't repeat itself from last time.
Okay. I would advise to sit with that front chair right there, because we're gonna have some questions for you.
We actually have one more caller?
I did close the public comment period, but I will reopen the public comment period, because I think it's important. So, let's hear the caller.
Eric, you are now live with the planning commission.
Uh, thank you, uh, planning commission, Commissioner Rosati. Um, I just wanted to, uh, chime in, my name's Eric Ben. I live on Frederick Street, within earshot distance of the establishment. I am someone who knows when the Chicago Blackhawks scored a goal or the Cubs hit a homerun, as the bar at the time was a Chicago bar. Um, I have lived here for almost twenty years. And I and many of my neighbors are excited and thrilled to have something new come into our neighborhood, an establishment that is primarily a restaurant, um, that does have some, uh, restrictions added to it. The eleven o'clock closing, the ten o'clock patio with no amplified music. If those are the conditions for which a restaurant wants to open in our neighborhood, we are ready to welcome them and look forward to, uh, them opening their doors as soon as possible. And we hope that the, uh, planning commission will, uh, planning board will, uh, give a thumbs up to, uh, an establishment that is well-needed in this area. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. No other public comment, I now declare the public comment period closed, again, final. Um, does the commission have any questions for staff? For staff?
Is there a vote, please?
Yes.
Um, was any consideration given to the amount of par- on, on-street parking? Was there any counts done? I mean, I just drove by it and it's wide open, there's nothing there.
Uh, well, we didn't have a transportation plan or a parking study done or anything like that. However, uh, we did know, did note in the staff report that there is ample parking available in the evening hours. Uh, we anticipate that, you know, as the, mostly other retail establishments close um, throughout the, throughout the day, um, that the parking will be, on-street parking will be available along Magnolia. But in addition, you know, there's, there are ample parking spaces. Um, there's a service parking lot in, on eight eleven North Buena Vista.
Because it sounds like it's gonna be very neighborhood-oriented, a walk-to destination type of thing.
That is what we envisioned.
So it looked like there's plenty of space on the street.
Yes, that is what we envisioned.
And also, I just wanted to note that in the, uh, three spaces that's gonna be onsite, one of them is handicap.
Yes, yes, sir.
So that's gonna be kind of like, uh, restricted use on that, but I'm just pointing it out. I'm good, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Mr. El-
Um, how do, is there, is there gonna be signage informing the patrons about the additional parking where they can park?
Yes, uh, we did have a condition of approval that would, that they would, that the applicant would have to have a sign onsite saying that, uh, additional parking is available at eight eleven North Buena Vista.
Okay.
As well as the parking onsite is only available for part, for our patrons.
And then the amplified noise outside in the patio area, does that include televisions? Because before there were televisions.
Yes, that will, that'll include any kind of, um, TV, stereo, anything. So there will be no live entertainment or any amplified noise outside. So, unfortunately, the, you know, Chicago Blackhawks goals.
Okay, that's all I had.
Wait, wait, Ma- Ms. Wick and then Mr. Monaco.
Thank you so much. Just a quick question for staff. Um, it would be my understanding that I hear the residents speaking about wanting additional parking restrictions in their neighborhood. That cannot be part of the conditional use permit. That's a separate entity with, I'm assuming, Public Works or something like that, am I correct?
You are correct, ma'am, that is, uh, not the purview of this, uh, um, application. However, it is at the pleasure of the commission, you can recommend staff take a look at that, um, at a future point.
And just for the benefit of the residents, if it's something that they do want to pursue, I know, for instance, I live near a popular restaurant, so we had speed bumps put on our street. How would they, how would the residents go about doing that, just so that they're aware?
I think that would be a call for Public Works, I think that's under their purview. So, uh, they can reach that department and, and make those inquiries.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you.
Just, just to clarify, Chair, the, so if, if there are members of the public or someone in attendance watching on TV, uh, they can contact the community development department's planning division, and then we can route them to the appropriate staff, whether it's at Public Works or actually within transportation planning, to look at anything, if they're looking at permitting, speed bumps or those things. These are typically things that are discussed, uh, in collaboration. And then ultimately, there's a whole process where you can apply for other restrictions. But I just wanted to make sure, uh, to your point, uh, Commissioner Wicks, the condition wouldn't be one on the project, if that's an interest of the public, but it would be one that we could follow up and, and provide guidance to them as to how to go about that process of implementing some sort of, uh, change to the, uh, limit, time limit onsite, or even permitting in the neighborhood.
Did you have a question, Ms. Monaco?
Just asked and answered, thank you.
Um, I have a couple of questions. Um, one, regarding the filming, do we have any control over how many film shoots they can have there? Is there a limit that we can put on it as a, as a board?
Um, you know, I'm not as familiar with our film permitting process. However, this is a conditional use permit. So, um, if, under the purview of the commission, you decide that there's, uh, conditions that need to be imposed to protect neighboring land uses from potential impacts, uh, that is something that you could propose as a condition, that the site not be available for filming. Uh, and if the applicant feels that that is, uh, something he can live with, they can live with as part of the approval, we can get an acknowledgement from them in that process as well.
Okay, and I, I plan to, to, uh, go down that road with the applicant. My second question is, I wanna make sure, a hundred percent, there's no way that we can, we can, uh, tonight have permit parking instituted on that street?
No, there's a whole process of, of vetting and deliberation that has to occur. And ultimately, uh, the idea there is that the residents are in essence going through the process and agreeing to have that imposition on them in that neighborhood.
Understood.
Chair Rosati, if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, as, as to film permits, it's, uh, the film permit office is within our police department. And so anytime, um, filming occurs on private property, they have to apply for a film permit through that office. Um, filming within a certain distance of residential uses requires notice to the adjacent residents if it occurs outside of regularly permitted hours, which are listed in our film permit regulations, which are online. Um, and i- in that instance, there is an opportunity for the public to contact the film permit office as well as the production company with concerns about the filming. So, um, there is a process in the city for how we permit filming, um, with, on public as well as private property.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Okay, and let's, uh, have questions for the applicant, any questions for the applicant? Come on, Mr. Stevie, is it?
Yep, Stevie.
We'll start with, let's start with Mr. Monaco.
Hi, thank you for coming for the commission. I actually have a question for Mr. Lou. Uh, you are the applicant. So I was wondering what your relationship is here with the restaurant. Um, are you- Um, are you part of the operations of the restaurant? Do you bring-
I was actually brought in as a consultant to help him with the whole entitlement process of this project. Uh, the architect that actually did the work and the design of this site is actually someone I have worked with many times. And one day I got a call out of the blue and he said, "Hey, you interested in a project?" I said, "Well, what is this project?" He said, "Here's the address, take a look." And I Googled the project and I was like, "Whoa." Took two seconds of Google search to bring up all the bad histories from it. And I was like, "Okay, so what am I doing over here?" And they told me that, you know, help this guy, he's gonna have some issues with navigating this whole process and I hope you can help him with it and help assist him with the project. So I, being that, you know, the nature of the project, I want to help make it a successful project. So that's why I decided to join.
But are, you're the applicant, do you have any relationship, business relationship?
Only on this project.
But are you gonna be operating or one of the operators of the restaurant?
I will not be.
Do you own the property? Do you have anything-
I do not have any ties to this property, other than a fact that I was brought on as a consultant.
We, we can't ask those questions.
Uh, I just, Commissioner Monaco, actually, I was just gonna say, uh, just to be clear, so you're, you're helping him process the entitlement?
I'm helping him with the whole entitlement process and helping him navigate-
Which is typical of, of applications, I guess.
Okay. Um, just, I had one other question. No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Elwer.
Uh, just wanted to say welcome. Um, and if there were a public health ordinance issued by any government, government agency, would you follow that ordinance?
Sure.
Okay, that's all I had.
Okay. Uh, you have one question and I have some questions. Yeah, sure, I'll go first. Step up to the microphone. I'm gonna ask you some pointed questions.
Sure.
And I think it's important that we get this right from this, from this, from this body. Um, there's been 117 calls, you heard, police calls to this neighborhood. Um, I've gotten some calls, I've gotten some text messages, I've gotten some emails. So, I guess my first question is, why did you apply for a type 47, uh, liquor license instead of type 41?
Um, well-
Like a, just a regular beer and wine for a restaurant?
Okay, so, the reason why is because if, like my, my wife, for example, she loves drinking margaritas. So I think on a 41, you can't make margaritas. So, for an instance, and another example, I like to enjoy a nice, uh, old-fashioned every once in a while. And, yeah, and I think probably on, I don't know what a 41 is, I know a 47, cause that's what I researched.
Actually, I, I made that recommendation to him because type 47 is commonly what restaurants go after, so I made, I just made that-
Is your thrust for this to be a restaurant or a bar?
Restaurant, bistro. I wanna have good food where people come in and like, "Oh, my God, this food is great." Bring their kids in, eat, have a drink, hang out with their friends, talk, go home, and then come walk and-
In your experience, you, you disclosed that you have no experience running a restaurant.
Correct.
Have you ever worked in a restaurant?
My, my wife has generational, uh, restaurant experience, her family.
And as far as dealing with over-served patrons, do you have any concern about?
I'm, uh, I'm pretty good with people. I'm a people's person, myself. Um, that's another reason why I thought it would be, since I was young, you know, it'd be great to have a place where people come in, you can talk to new people, get to know new people. That's what really, I mean, I, you always hear, you know, life's not about, you know, where you, it's about where you're going, but it's also about the journey and the people that you meet along the way and the experiences that you have. And, um, a lot of these experiences sometimes happen at your local neighborhood bistro and where you can meet your, you know, neighbors that you never knew before, that kind of thing. Um, so, I, I, with that being said, I can see if someone's obviously been over-poured or I guess over-
Served.
If they're over-served or getting drunk, you know, it's, hey, you know, maybe it's time to stop drinking and, you know, here's a, here's a free bread on the house or something. But I, I, I don't intend to have people drunk, walking around, loitering, parking up, uh, people's, uh, in front of their houses. I think that's really crummy for me to have that-
But you can't control it.
To a certain extent, you know, but I'm gonna try to with all my ability of whatever I can do. I definitely do not want that to happen because I would myself not like it, so.
Yeah, so-
Do you mind if I speak for a second? Generally with ABC license, from what I recall, there usually is a requirement for the training of the bartenders and I'm, I believe Stevie will want to train his staff properly to avoid issues like this.
Yeah, of course.
Especially with issues of over-serving because you are liable for those things.
Yeah.
Chair, if I may, just to clarify, and, and I'm pretty sure, as going through this process, uh, as they, on condition 18, on the set of conditions that are being recommended to the commission, there is a specific language that talks about ABC licensing, which includes basically making sure, you know, they're doing the proper, you know, verification of age, they're also, uh, trained in, in understanding and kind of flagging when people have gotten to the point where there's maybe over-serving, so, uh, and to, to the gentleman's, uh, response that, um, these ABC licenses are not cheap. And if they lose the ABC license, if it's revoked by ABC, uh, it comes at significant cost because it limits the operational, uh, capacity of the site. So I, I think there's, uh, both safeguards as far as how they get their license and then the ongoing training, which is conditioned into the project. And, uh, my recollection, uh, is that there's also, um, situations where, uh, ABC goes and confirms that they're following those requirements and in instances where there may be even stings from police and local law enforcement to verify if there's an issue of potential serving to minors and whatnot. So, there are conditions and requirements under this effort and clearly you're in the early stages of the process, but we understand that the ABC license, uh, has significant safeguards, which are hardcoded into your conditions of approval, that if you violate and lose the license, you may also be susceptible to revocation of your CUP.
Um, employees, how many employees are you gonna have?
We're thinking probably somewhere around on and off, cause you got a different shift, probably like 10 people.
And where would those people park?
They're gonna park in the front on Magnolia when they can, or they, honestly, they can park on the other spot, but I'm, what I'm hoping is to, um, and what I've done is, uh, to try to hire people within the, the area. So they can bike in, they can, because chat, bike, um, what's it, the Chandler Bike Path is right there, it's super near. And from that, you can go, you know, anywhere from North Hollywood over to there within a few minutes on a bicycle. So I'm hoping that I can gather employees within the area, so that way I'm not, um, you know, hindered by them not having a car, not getting to work, traffic, those kind of things as well.
Would you have a problem if there was a condition that you couldn't park on a residential street?
Absolutely not.
Employees?
I would not. But just to, to spearhead what he was saying, with all those things in place, I think with myself as, as, as the person there, I don't want that happening. So more importantly, I'm gonna try everything I can to not have those things affect other people.
And, and I believe you. And I, look, I want it to be a raging success.
Yeah.
But I don't want it to be, I don't want it to be at the, and then, you know what? I've lived, I've lived one block from there on Florence for, I grew up there for 30 years of my life. So I know the area well, I know that the ownership of this lo- uh, location over the past since 1974, um, it, it will be a success because I know that the people in that area, um, like to walk and come out to very little food places in the area. So I want it to be a success, but not at the detriment of the, the residents. And I'm looking at it from, from their point of view. So, i- if you're okay with that, I would like to make a condition that the, if you're gonna have 10 employees, that they'll park somewhere not on residential. And there's plenty of parking on Magnolia, as you said, they may have to move their cars every once in a while, but that's part of it. And if you're confident that they're gonna bike or skateboard or ride share, then no problem.
100%.
Okay.
And I'm, um, yeah, I'm 100%. Well, that goes without saying, I, I don't want, you didn't even have to say that to me, I mean, obviously we do, but I would not want someone parking in front of the gentleman's house or the lady's house. I don't want, you know, that's not neighborly.
Sure.
Wouldn't do that and I don't think anyone that works in the place should either.
How important is that film permit thing?
You know, um-
If you, it, once a year?
Do you mind if I speak to this? I have a feeling why some of the past, that location was so popular, because it, I've seen the old pictures of it, I mean, I don't, it looks like a western movie, so I'm pretty sure that probably was why it was so popular. But I don't know if you guys have ever seen what it looks like today, it's quite dilapidated from what it is. And being that there are plans to renovate this location, it's gonna lose a lot of the old western characteristics because it's very deteriorated. Have you noticed the, uh, plans that were being submitted, which is not up there? Um, it's changed quite a bit, so it's gonna lose a lot of those western characteristics. So I don't think the filming thing is terribly much an issue as well as-
So if there was a condition that there would be no filming at that site, you're okay with it?
Now, when you're saying filming, are you also referring to YouTube filming because-
I'm concerned about, um-
Commercial filming.
Movies, commercials, yes.
Commercial, not private YouTube stuff.
No, not like Instagram or anything like that.
I, up until right now, I didn't even know it was a thing, you know, to be honest.
Oh, in Burbank, it's a thing?
I had, I had no idea, so, um, so I, you know, to, to be honest with you, I wouldn't know what I'm losing out on or what I would be gaining, you know, if I did or didn't. But if it was like, do it or you don't get it, I'll be, obviously I'm gonna say, "Okay", right?
What would you, what, what would you like? I'm asking.
I mean, I, I don't even know what, what I, you know-
Oh, I wanna be fair, so.
Yeah, what, what the benefits of people coming to film there would be. If they came in and filmed and it wasn't benefit-
How frequent was it, the filming?
A lot.
A lot?
Yeah.
It's that bad, huh?
A lot? Well, I don't know, um, how about, how about, um, I, how about this, to be all fair, cause she lives right behind us, what would she think? None at all, or once, once a year?
It depends on who owns the restaurant and the, the market. But like now, they still have a lot in Burbank.
Right.
So, I would say every other month.
Oh, wow, how much?
There you go.
All right, so six times a year?
Yeah.
All right.
And I probably won't even do that.
Okay. Uh, thank you for answering my questions. Any other questions for the applicant? Ms. Wick?
You pretty much had my entire line of questioning, so just, at, just to kind of reinforce the, the serving issue, are, are you planning on doing any additional training for yourself besides the, what's required by the alcohol and the AB, for the ABC license?
Uh, training, uh-
In terms of how to serve, training your bartenders for disorderly conduct, you training for disorderly conduct?
I, I plan, yes.
Do you have a training program for your staff, that type of thing?
Um, I don't have anything yet, but I do plan on doing all those things. Um, it, it's just taken so long to get up to this point, I didn't even know if it was gonna happen or not, so I, I didn't wanna put more money into it and then lose it. So, um, I don't, but I will and, um, 100% will do that for myself, obviously, because I wanna protect my investment and make it as, as, uh, as good as I can make it. You know, so if there's things I can learn, I will, obviously, cause I'm gonna have to learn how to do, I mean, probably like the stock keeping and the training on how to pour and all those things. If there's a, a license or something that I can get for it, then I plan to do it, yes.
Okay. And just for the benefit of the public, um, assuming that this is approved tonight and I realize you have building permits and a lot of other stuff, what's your timeline to open?
Yesterday?
Realistically, though.
Um, realistically, um, I, I was hoping that I would be open in July. You know, I was hoping I would be open in December, you know, but I, I understand the process now and I, and I know it, it takes some time and there's a lot of things to go through. So, I think, um, because the type 47 license takes at least, uh, from what I've been told so far from, uh, the broker, is it takes at least six months to transfer. So I can't have any alcohol or anything for at least six months there. I do hope and plan to, as soon as I get the building permits, to rehab the inside and hopefully have food earlier than that, hopefully within, you know, three or four months.
He's wrapping up his, uh, design for the interiors right now and he's planning to submit it to building and plan check, so that's gonna probably cycle for a little bit. So, once he's finished with that, he needs to get his construction crew or find a, get a cou- a couple of construction bits together so he can actually build out the place. Uh, he was originally hoping to save some money on the construction costs because, you know, this is, this project is costing quite a lot of money, but, yeah. Fortunately, construction is what it is right now.
But nothing is cheap anymore.
Nothing's cheap. It's like 30 some percent above what it used to be. But yeah, it's, it's a whole process of going through building, plan check, getting his permits, getting a construction crew to get, start work. It all takes time, unfortunately, so he's at the mercy of that.
Hopefully sooner than later.
Got it. And what kind of food is it?
It's gonna be, um, like bistro, like burgers, fish and chips. Um, really, I, I, it's funny, I put a menu together.
I made a recommendation that he should find a professional chef.
I, I put a menu together and the menu is all the things that my wife and I like to eat. So we're gonna break that up out and then kind of-
Let that be noted, I make a recommendation to get a professional chef to make your menu.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff or the applicant? Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed and the Planning Commission will now deliberate, what is the Planning Board's pleasure. Mr. Elwer.
I'm confident in the applicant. Um, I've been to Tin Horn Plats plenty of times and there's always been parking up front, always. Um, I like that they're gonna provide signage, you know, for the additional parking. Um, and also, I like what you said about the, um, employees not parking in the residential area, if they can avoid that somehow.
Okay.
But I'm for the project.
Mr. Monaco?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, let's hear from Ms. Wick before you make that motion. Or you can make the motion and we can still deliberate, with either one.
I'd like to move that we, um, accept the, or adopt the resolution of this Planning Commission and City of Burbank approving project number 22-000435. A conditional use permit to operate a 1,708 square foot restaurant, drinking slash drinking establishment, and an administrative use permit to allow a reduction in required parking from 10 spaces per 1,000 square feet to 3.3 spaces per 1,000 square feet of gross floor area based on the findings of fact and subject to the attached conditions of approval. Project number 22-0004305.
I'd like to second.
Um, I would like to add two conditions. One, six filming permits, uh, a year. And two, uh, no employee parking on residential streets. Do you accept that amendment to your, it, does the board feel that's fair and do you accept that into your motion?
I do.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so the motion is as stated and, uh, as amended. Ms. Wick, what would you say? Oh, I'm sorry, we have a motion inside, go ahead.
I just, I just wanna say that I'm for this project, but we, given the history of the property, and I'm not just talking about the previous tenant, but with everything, we, you have exactly one chance to get this right with the city and I think you know that. And it's not, it's not a threat, but it's just for the neighborhood. The neighborhood deserves a really, really good establishment. The city deserves a good establishment and you, yourself, deserve a good establishment. So please, please, use careful consideration when you're operating. Please train your bartenders, please train yourselves, do not, do not let it get out of hand. It doesn't sound like the kind of establishment that will get out of hand, but please, please just use common sense and protect the neighborhood as much as you can because they deserve this and this is, this has been a long time coming. That's all I wanna say.
I would agree with Ms. Wick. We are being extremely careful and the reason why we're being careful is because you abut residential, uh, neighborhood. Um, if I can give you any advice, uh, I know the restaurant community here in Burbank is small. Um, I would, uh, I would say you should walk over to Paquito Moss. Uh, he's been there, I don't know, 30 years. He got a, a beer and wine, he got a liquor license from us a few months ago in the neighborhood that came out to support him, was amazing. They could not speak higher of his commitment to the neighborhood, moving trash cans and asking pa- patrons to move cars and moving cars for patrons and just, it was amazing. So, it takes a lot of effort, um, you know, obviously you, you have the, the stack kind of against you from what was there before. Um, I, I would just say, as Ms. Wick said, just do everything you can. Um, and you, you may want to ask, you know, this is your first venture, um, and the restaurant business is tough. So you may want to talk to um, uh, the, the owner of that establishment, because he's been in Burbank for a long, long time. So, uh, that's, that's all I have to say on the issue. Why don't we go ahead and? Any other comments? Go ahead and poll the, the board, please.
Chair, be- before you do so, just so, so we all heard it, what were the, can you repeat the two amendments?
Six uh, filming permits a year.
Up to six?
Up to six.
Uh-huh.
And uh, uh, that the employees would not be parking on residential streets.
Okay.
Good? Have we got the second? We good? Good? Yeah, okay.
Chair Rizotti?
Yes.
Commissioner Elrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Monica?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wick?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Congratulations.
Good luck.
Good luck. Moving on to item number two, now is the time and place for a, the se- second public hearing. Item on project number two-three dash zero zero, zero one two five eight, a zone text amendment to establish objective design and development standards for multi-family residential only and mixed-use development in non-residential zones. Before we begin, do any planning uh, members have any legal, financial, or other conflict of interest relating to this matter?
No.
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 Have any planning board members had any communications, including written, oral, with any person about this project?
No.
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 And I'm just gonna disclose that I have a couple of emails from members of the community that I'll read during the public comment period. Um, Mr. Ramirez, have the notices by law been given?
Yes, they have.
Are there any written communications on this matter?
Uh, we have not received any, but uh, for the record, I guess you mentioned you've received some?
I have. Will the representative of the Community Development Department please introduce yourself and summarize the matter for us?
Good evening. May I have the presentation, please? Thank you. Uh, good evening Chair Rizotti and members of the commission. My name is Amanda Landry, Senior Planner with CDD Planning. I'm here tonight with my colleagues, Associate Planner Greg Mirza Vakian and Joseph Pengulatin. And with us, we also have the Assistant Community Development Director for Transportation. Oh, sorry. It's still on that page. Yeah, sorry. I need my presentation. I can keep going while it comes up. It's a lot of text, but, so, um, but David Criski is here in the audience to answer any transportation-related questions. And for your consideration tonight is a zone text amendment to establish objective design and development standards for mixed-use and multi-family residential-only projects in non-residential zones. So the reason for the proposed zone text amendment is AB twenty-eleven, which is known as the Affordable Housing and High Roads Job Act of twenty-twenty-two, which takes effect on July first, twenty-twenty-three. AB twenty-eleven is the most recent of several state laws related to ministerial streamlined reviews that local governments must follow. And it applies to affordable housing for multi-family housing and mixed-use developments as long as they meet project, site, labor, and affordability requirements. There are also many other eligibility and project requirements that need to be met in order for a development project to be processed pursuant to AB twenty-eleven. Among these requirements, the development project must be multi-family, which means, for this case, five or more units. It is, it must be allowed in any zone where office, retailer, parking are a permitted use. So this opens up quite a few areas of land that are zoned for non-residential use for these types of developments. However, there are also several other criteria, um, eligibility criteria that limit the potentially available sites, such as location on a site adjoining or most recently or recently used for industrial uses, commercial corridor width requirements for some mixed-income projects. And then the projects must also satisfy the eligibility criteria for SB thirty-five, which is another state mandated, mandated streamlined ministerial review process, um, which has its own discrete set of criteria that this bill also requires compliance with. Okay, I'll go to the slide where I'm at. Um, so under state law, the city is required to implement the provisions of AB twenty-eleven if it is invoked. However, it will be challenging for the city to implement the required streamlined ministerial review. Um, as the Burbank Municipal Code, the BMC lacks separate design and development standards for multi-family residential only and mixed-use projects in non-residential zones. And this is because the BMC has historically been drafted with the assumption that local control and discretion over the details of such development is usually worked out through an extensive discretionary review process, um, such as a conditional use permit upon development, development review. However, as noted before, the discretionary review process is no longer available to the city for these projects. And although there are three specific plan efforts underway, which will result in objective design and development standards um, for these types of projects, they will only apply to those specific plan areas and not the rest of the city that is, that is subject to these streamlined ministerial reviews, such as AB twenty-eleven and SB thirty-five. As AB twenty-eleven is similar to SB thirty-five, the city is limited in, in the scope of its streamlined ministerial review to the verification of consistency with the objective design and development standards that are on the books at the time the application is submitted. And as a reminder, the objective standards um, involve no personal or subjective judgment by a public official and are verifiable by reference to criteria that's available. To date, the city has received six SB thirty-five applications, and we anticipate that this number will only continue to grow. Um, and those applications that were submitted were su- are subject to those rules that were in place at the time of submittal. Um, and the city can only apply a few, if any significant development standards, as most of the ones that we have on the books are not objective, or we just don't have any, um, such as the case with mixed use. So it is clear the city needs to establish a ro- more robust set of standards that can be applied to the streamlined ministerial reviews mandated by AB twenty-eleven and SB thirty-five, um, as well as mixed-use projects in general that are already permitted under the code through the DR and COP process. And it's also clear that this needs to be done before even more streamlined ministerial review applications are submitted um, and before AB twenty-eleven takes effect in July first, twenty-twenty-three. So although there is now a great sense of urgency to establish objective design and development standards, the goal of this ETA is to develop, is to develop standards that will apply to any future applications for ministerial streamlined reviews while maintaining local control and incorporating long-established standards or concepts that are Burbank-specific, but will now comply with state standards. And a significant effort was taken to replicate or reflect these standards, or the intent of these standards, in the um, in the proposed zone text amendment. So using that general approach to the ETA process of focusing on the established standards and concepts that are Burbank-specific, but now tweaked to comply with state mandates, a set of multi-family residential-only objective design and development standards were crafted, taking into consideration that additional refinement was needed so that they would be um, both objective standards and appropriate for their presence in a built, uh, commercial environment. So while they largely reflect the existing multi-family residential standards, they also have um, standards for building frontage design, buffering requirements from lower-scale residential zones, open space flexibility, parking structure location, and visibility and screening requirements for equipment. So this slide here shows um, just a, a snippet of the areas of development that we have addressed that, that cover site design, bulk and mass, modulation, um, parking requirements and so on, along with some architectural standards. Um, and just for reference, they include maximum lot coverage, maximum height, uh, setbacks, parking requirements, um, and open space requirements. So the same general guiding principles that helped shape the multi-family residential-only development standards um, were also sort of taken into consideration for the development of the mixed-use objective design and development standards, which again was the focus on established standards or concepts that are Burbank-specific, but will comply with the state mandates. Um, in this case, it was a little bit more difficult because there were no existing for mixed-use developments, uh, no existing standards for mixed-use developments. And a result, the mixed-use standards that were crafted for this ETA, um, while are consistent with the proposed multi-family residential standards to the extent possible, they also incorporate um, specific standards to address the commercial component of mixed-use develop- developments. And those include operational and performance standards, um, flexibility in building design, open space, publicly accessible open space, um, and then the identification of compatible uses as part of a mixed-use development. And again, these standards are intended to ensure contextually appropriate design that is also sensitive to the lower-scale residential zones. And this slide just shows, in addition, the extra areas of focus that were um, paid attention to beyond what the multi-family development standards did. So here we see unbundled parking requirements, um, publicly accessible open space, screening of equipment, performance standards, and that means things like venting from the commercial properties away from the residential, um, hours of operation, uh, things of that nature to help protect the residents that live both on the site and adjacent to the site. Um, the proposed ETA would also include a reference to a proposed city council resolution that would establish citywide objective design and development standards that would apply to streamlined ministerial reviews and all other development projects. And the purpose of that resolution is to provide clear, specific, and objective criteria for private development projects requiring either discretionary or ministerial review, such as a AB thirty, um, SB thirty-five or AB twenty-eleven project. And this would enable the city to implement through objective standards what are currently just policies or informal requirements. And the first chapter of that document is entitled Complete Streets Objective Design and Development Standards, um, which addresses the public realm in front of developments and relates to transportation, traffic-related uh, design standards. And as noted in the staff report, the planning commission is not being asked to make any recommendation about the city council resolution to the city council, but the planning commission is uh, being provided with these documents for your review, just to provide context to the overall project. And then there are a few tweaks proposed to the use list table in our municipal code. Um, right now, the Burbank Municipal Code does indicate um, both mixed-use and multi-family residential uses. Um, but we just clarified it, or proposing clarifications, so that the mixed-use section now reads um, multi-family residential with commercial and any con- so that means it can be in any configuration, not just above commercial. And then multi-family residential only is being updated to show that with an S, so when permitted by state law, it's allowed, but otherwise, it's not, not allowed. And whether a use is allowed on a particular site will always be subject to the planning division's review upon project submittal. So we'll double-check everything, even though uh, the code says this, we review each project upon submittal. The California Government Code, Section six-five-eight-six-zero, requires that modifications to the zoning code be consistent with the adopted general plan and the rest of the zoning code. The proposed zone text amendment is consistent with at least twenty-eight of the Burbank twenty-thirty-five general plan land use and mobility-related goals and policies, and the ETA will promote context-sensitive design adjacent to single-family and multiple-family residential zones. Per state law, the proposed ETA is also exempt from CEQA, that is, as it is not considered a project subject to review. So there is an urgent need to establish these objective design and development standards for streamlined ministerial reviews in non-residential zones. And with a very narrow window of opportunity, planning staff, staff has developed a comprehensive set of objective, objective development standards with the intent to better protect the city's vision for commercial neighborhoods that may house these projects, as well as any residential neighborhoods that abut them. And this effort will enable the city to efficiently process future projects and maintain local control to the extent possible. Therefore, staff is recommending that the planning commission adopt a resolution of the planning commission of the City of Burbank recommending the city council, adopted ordinance of the city council of the City of Burbank, amending Title Ten, Chapter One, Zoning of the Burbank Municipal Code to establish objective design and development standards for mixed-use and residential-only projects in non-residential zones. Between this meeting and the city council meeting, staff will be engaging with the public and other city departments and divisions to further refine the proposed standards. And the next steps include an interdepartmental review committee meeting on May fourth, a virtual committee meeting on May tenth, and ongoing coordination with the city attorney's office to ensure consistency um, with these proposed regulations and the applicable state laws. And then the city council public hearing will also have an opportunity for engagement from the public. And then there's also extensive ongoing engagement related to the specific plan updates that continues to go on um, for those focused geographic areas. And for all of these uh, public events, they are published in the newspaper. Um, the city has a social media blast and e-news, e-notify um, that we have been taking advantage of, so the public is aware of this project moving forward. And that can, that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions you might have. Um, again, we have transportation staff if you have questions.
Thank you. We will now open the meeting to hear from any persons who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the planning board for a maximum time of three minutes. For members of the public who wish to comment in person, please present a completed speaker card to the planning division staff. If you wish to speak for, to members who wish to speak by uh, telephone, please call eight-one-eight-two-three-eight-three-three-three-five to address the planning board. Callers may be placed in a queue until all person, until, until all in-person comments have been received. The phone lines are now open. Please bear with us as it may take a couple of minutes for the first callers to get through the line. For callers, please remember to lower the volume on your TV or your computer and take the phone off speaker when you deliver your comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers here tonight? I see two, correct? Only two? Uh, I can't make out the last, the first name's Ben.
Sure. I'll give you the rest of it. Ben Beckler.
Sure.
Good evening.
Good morning. Good, good evening.
Mr. Chairman, commission members, I've had a lot of opportunity to, to spend with Amanda and staff and uh, working on the media district-specific plan and uh, some of the things that you guys are challenged with right now. Um, my question, and, and I haven't had a lot of time to look at AB two thousand eleven, but would, this zone text amendment is being done to head off changes that are, that are coming from the state. I think they're controversial, SB thirty-five and AB two thousand eleven, and there probably will be challenges um, as time goes on. If these zone text amendments are made, and then somebody challenges and is successful in overturning SB thirty-five or AB two thousand eleven, will these changes, if adopted, then be repealed as well? Or are these things are, that are going to stand regardless of what happens at the state level and what's being mandated by the state to, to the city? I don't know if there's an answer to that, but-
You'll, you'll, you, you're presenting your question, and then staff will respond to that.
Good enough. Good enough. Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight. Uh, Mr. Donahue?
Good evening Chair Rizotti and Commissioners. My name is David Donahue, and I apologize for not introducing myself properly the first time in front of the dais. I am a Burbank resident and business owner. I'm also very active in the ADU movement. I love accessory dwelling units, and I just built one for my father-in-law, and it is great having him in the backyard. The part about this that I'm kind of concerned about is the, the ability for most- The part about this that I'm kind of concerned about is the ability for most Burbank residents to fully understand the corridors and sort of conceptualize what this means as, as a whole. And the part that really has kind of brought me into this, this portion of the conversation, and I understand that it's very early, it's preliminary, because I know that there's going to be some community outreach, and so I encourage that, I would ask that the commission, if you could and is allowed, instruct staff, ask staff to give us some examples of what this means. And I'm pointing directly to SB 35. I'm pointing to, you know, the projects that are on Empire, they're going to be bringing in 146 apartments with seven parking spots, so 200-plus, you know, individual bedrooms. So it is nice to hear another acronym, ZTA, which, wow, okay, thank you, I can understand that, but I don't know it the way that the commission does. So I'd ask for some help. I would ask for your guidance as you volunteer your time, and thank you very much for that, for being here when you're doing this. But to help those of us who are much more neophytes and ignorant to what this actually means, staff understands it. They know it. I don't know it. And what, what does it mean? What am I going to see on Magnolia, which the, the gentleman Stevie, I'm excited for him, who is presenting for his CUP? I wish everything could have a CUP. I wish that if there was a violation, you could go, that's not what we allowed you to do it, you're gone, or you're done. I don't, I don't see that happening, because a part of it that kind of concerned me is that you want to have rigorous control, asterisk, as long as it is in line with state guidelines. Well, hello, folks, state guidelines are a hammer. Let me take that back. They're like a bomb that's getting dropped on us. And again, Empire Avenue, SB 35. Local control to the extent possible, second asterisk. It's great that you're going to be trying to go for some sort of local control when the state is basically taking all of it away from us. So if there's anything that the commission could do, I would encourage and advocate for that. Thank you very much for your time this evening, and again, thank you for your service.
Thank you. Do you have any callers?
No callers.
Okay. Ms. Landry, I think I'm going to read the, the emails that I got so we can introduce those into the, the public comment period, if that's okay?
That is fine.
Is that good? Okay. Okay, so the first one is, in the staff report, page 18, under Public Notice, CDD cites to the BMC 10-1-994 and states that there has been a compliance with BMC 10-1-1994 because notice was published in the newspaper 10 days prior to the planning hearing. I would expect that if someone responded to the notice, they would want to see the materials, but the materials for the agenda item were not available until about 5:00 PM on Friday, April 21st. So when the notice was posted, the materials were not available to the public. It seems to me that adequate notice necessarily includes the availability of the materials at the time the notice was posted. Otherwise, why post in the notice the usual language that the reader wants further information? They can contact the planner. Nevertheless, as the materials are voluminous and subject matter complicated, I have brief comments at this time. While the staff report states that some examples of changes, Exhibit 1 to Attachment A, seem set forth the objective standards applicable in all of the properties indicated that the maps attached A to Exhibit C, but doesn't show the differences in each of the individual zones between what is codified now and what may be codified if the CDD recommendations are in place. So she's looking for a before and after chart that's not provided. Maybe such a chart in time prohibited, but ideally, I would like to see such a comparison, especially for properties in the Rancho, the property next to Circle K, which is currently a horse rental barn, is prime example as to the intersection of two on-street trails, two dirt trails, and the Mariposa Bridge, because there is no comparison chart and analysis of the impact of that particular property that would require AB 2011 and Zone M1 to see exactly what the differences are. In addition, in Exhibit 1 to Attachment A, page 110-621, R1H is not listed, not in the phrase. All zone except for R1, R2, R2, R4, or MDR3 and MDR4, why is R1H not listed with the other residential zones? Exhibit B, Working Giraffe Complete Streets Objective Design Development Standards, does not reference anything with regard to equestrian priority streets. The citywide complete street plan adopted in 2020 includes Chapter 10 Equestrian, which sets forth equestrian priority streets and sets forth objective standards with regard to trails. Further, in the staff report, at pages 14, 17, and 18, there are citations to policies in Burbank 2035 with regard to complete streets and equestrians. Why is there not a mention of equestrian, equestrian priority, or like in, or like in Exhibit B? That's the first one. And if you need clarification, let me know, and I can go back. Hmm. I thought I had an email. I thought I had an email, I'm sorry. If I recall, the other question was regards to the media district-specific plan, and the, the questions that they were asking are what protections will be in place where currently mixed use is not, not applicable, but now mixed use may be applicable, and how does that relate to it being butted up against residential? And so that's the only public comments that I have. I declare the public comment period closed. Would the representative of the Community Development Department like to make any further comments?
Yes, Amanda Landry, CDD Planning. I will make some brief responses to a few of the items brought up by the public, and then I'll ask my colleague David Criskey to speak more to the complete streets and equestrian trail design issues. I'll just kind of go in order on a few ideas that came up. These projects are under AB 2011 and SB 35 are streamlined ministerial reviews. The city's review authority for these, the decision-makers, is going to be the city council. That's how it currently is structured with SB 35 projects, and it will be the same for AB 2011 projects. The city council will be considering an amendment to clarify that in the near future. So they are, when they do this performance of their ministerial design review, it's limited, again, only to compliance checks for verification for compliance with any of the objective design and development standards on the books at the time the application was submitted. And with AB 2011 coming online on July 1st, 2023, we're probably going to be seeing more applications, and more of these will be going before the city council. It's a very short window of opportunity for us to take this into consideration and have some objective design and development standards on the books while, where there currently are none. We had some questions about the parking requirements. So under SB 35, AB 2011, and even under density bonus regulations and TOD regulations, parking can be significantly reduced or waived. That's something the applicants can do regardless of what development standards we put on the books. However, if someone does come in and wants to build a typical, like a small mixed use with like four units above, like 2,000 square feet of commercial, sort of what you would see on main streets in our recent past, they would have to go through a conditional use permit process and a development review, and they would be subject to compliance with the parking standards that we're putting into place, because they are coming in through the city's process. If they invoke AB 2011 or SB 35, then they can waive those parking requirements. For the notification, the, the question about why aren't all the materials available at the date of publication of the notice, they are never available on that date. They're always pushed to the public on the Friday before the mission, the commission meeting. They're never available 10 business days before the meeting. Although there are working documents available on, online to some extent, and staff is always available for questions or comments or have appointments to anyone that's interested in the process or to make comments, but the full, the entire staff report and completed attachments are not on the date of publication of those public notices. They are available on the website by six, on the Friday before the planning commission meeting. For the question about what is the difference before, before and after, I wanted to make clear that the development standards for the multifamily residential in non-residential zones and the mixed use are completely new standards. There is no change from before and after, because there are none. So currently, if a project is submitted, a residential project is submitted on, say, a C3 property, there are no residential standards to apply to that project. They only have to meet the very limited commercial development standards. Same with mixed use, there are no mixed-use development standards. So we only apply what development standards are on the books. There's a small area in the Burbank Center Plan where it talks about just kind of combining multifamily with commercial, but it, there, it doesn't address any of the conflicts that arise between those two sets of development or the actual issues that arise during, for that type of development, and it has been very rarely exercised. Let me see. For the media district-specific plan questions, they're, they're going through an extensive update process at this time. There has been quite a bit of community outreach, but that specific plan isn't expected to come online until the end of this year, and that is after the date that AB 2011 goes into effect on July 1st. So there will be a window of time where there is nothing to protect the people in the media district from development that comes in under any of these regulations, because the media district-specific plan regulations at this time are so worded, so that they are not objective standards, and we can't enforce them. So there's these sort of aspirational language in those developments, in the standards, but they are not objective development standards, and we can't enforce them, so they can't apply. So it just leaves those areas susceptible to developments that you can just come in that don't reflect any of Burbank's vision. I think that covers my notes. I'm going to ask Assistant Director Criskey to come up and talk a little bit more about the complete streets, objective design standards, and future plans for question.
Before you do, let me just augment what Amanda was mentioning, too. I think there was a question from one of the speakers as to examples. So, case in point, you've, you've seen, you've not interacted with these projects, but the Pickwick Project, which is on, it was a commercial site, right, commercial use that then was converted into residential. If you recall, there was a lot of angst and consternation from some members of the public that why were the development standards that we were applying to it so limited? Like, weren't, weren't we asking for more things through that process? And the fact is, those standards weren't in place. So what this type of a project does is, and in the case of Empire, you know, what standards did you apply there? Well, it's industrial zone property, so it's just the industrial standards, which are very limited. So the intent of this effort is to, not of our liking, but to basically, in essence, try to play catch-up with statutory obligations under AB 2011 that on July 1st, without the standards being put in place, would limit us in the development standards that we could apply to those type of projects in those areas where AB 2011 projects are eligible. In addition to that, what this also does is it references the fact that SB 35 projects in those corridors would also have to apply these development standards. So when you have a mixed-use project or 100% residential project, or even in other cases where it's not an SB 35 or an AB 2011, but someone wants to do an infill project of these types, the standards, both currently and with the limitations imposed on us by the state, behoove us to establish these type of objective development standards so that we at least have a starting off point. When an applicant comes to submit an application, they can look at those standards, and then to their best of their ability and whatever the limitations of the law are, is to design a project so that it integrates better into the neighborhood as best it can. But absent that, we're very limited in what can, we can request or suggest, because they can invoke that provision of the law that says, I'm only going to comply with the objective standards on the books. In addition to that, and David will talk a little bit greater about this, is the city is undertaking a longer-term effort to establish kind of a, a database of objective development and design standards. The chapter that's in front of you is the first chapter of multiple chapters. This particular one, David will speak about in greater detail, focuses on the infill development along the commercial corridors. There was a question regarding the equestrian section of the complete streets and how that would be implemented. We'd have to do a separate chapter to codify those requirements, and what you have in front of you is what we could honestly put together in such a short window to be able to, one, bring it before the commission and then go to council and have something presented in front of them and codified, so that we're basically only like two days' difference between the effective date of AB 2011 and when these standards would take effect. So it's not perfect. If we had more time, I would say, in wholeheart agreement with the public, that we would make them available for a longer period of time. And so during this period between the commission and the council, we're having a community meeting, we're taking additional feedback, and ultimately, at the, at the council, that'll be another public hearing, both for a first reading and consideration of a second reading. We'll, we'll also take additional input, and the council will. But we're in a better position with these regulations than we are absent them, because at least now we have objective development standards that we can refer applicants to instead of what we currently have, which is hit or miss on, depending on what zone it's in and the type of development they're going to make for the project. But I just wanted to add that. David?
Yes, good evening, Chair Rosati and members of the commission. David Criskey, Assistant Community Development Director for Transportation, and my team and I were responsible for helping the planning division with crafting the objective design standards for complete streets. And as Mr. Ramirez mentioned, this is a first cut. We are trying to capture with this first cut kind of the standard, basic, primarily pedestrian realm and to some extent bicycle realm, right-of-way improvements that come with land use and how we can put those into standards that can just be objectively applied to projects without, as Mr. Ramirez and Ms. Landry stated, without us as professionals having input and decisions made about those improvements. So pedestrian realm improvement, sidewalk widths, the arrangement of the sidewalk, curb radii, crosswalks, those things are, are things that are prescriptive enough that you can kind of just make requirements for development for making improvements along the sidewalk. Other parts of the complete streets plan, the transit section, the motorist roadway section, the equestrian section, don't quite lend themselves to this very kind of basic prescriptive requirements. Or maybe they do, but we need to work out those details in a bit longer fashion, or maybe as part of the specific plans that we're working on, which is why they're not initially included. But we did want to focus on kind of bread and butter, complete street safety and improvements that we know we ask for of, of most, if not all, projects, but we're finding with SB 35 projects and potentially with the 2011 projects, we don't have the ability now to ask for it if it's not explicitly part of a standard. We have our complete streets guidelines, but we don't have standards. So specifically with the equestrian improvements, you know, we have a map of equestrian priority streets, and the, the complete streets plan talks about on those streets, consider equestrian improvements on them. We focused at the, at the community level and at the city council level on a particular kind of network of potential future equestrian trails. But the, the map is all sorts of streets, and if we But the map is all sorts of streets, and if we kind of just objectively apply to standard, we might be putting little fragments of horse trail on every equestrian street. So we need a little more nuance and a little more planning to figure out how to objectify and put more concrete standards for some of the equestrian improvements because they don't lend themselves to be kind of very basic, whereas every other land use project has a sidewalk. Most projects maybe have an intersection, and those things we can quantify, whereas some of the other modes in the complete streets plan are going to need a little more work before we put something out there that categorizes itself as an objective standard.
One last thing, if I may add to one of the commenters, I believe it was Ben Beckler from the Media District. And Ben's very thankful for Ben's input on the Media District. He's been talking to us about it and has some familiarity with multifamily residential development. He asked the question of these standards being put in place now and whether if and when the Media District specific plan, like in that area, in the Media District specific plan, if new standards are put in place, then there's usually typically language in the specific plans that refer people that if it's within the planning area, these are the standards that would apply and supersede other standards that are in effect. Similar language would be considered. The importance of this is that as comprehensive and as large an area the specific plans cover that we're talking about, there are still pockets of corridors that are non-residential zoned areas where these type of infill can occur, and this would be, this would cover all those areas up until the specific plans are in place, but then those standards would apply, and someone would have to take an application through and look at those standards and see what they're going to comply with or what they're going to invoke, you know, a waiver or a concession or something under different, you know, land use requirements like density bonus law or SB thirty-five. So I just wanted to make sure to add that. So it's not like it's set in stone today and can't be modified, but what it does is it gives us a leg up by having standards in place that we could refer to, which don't, as Ms. Landry noted, don't exist in those two areas currently in our code.
And if I may also add to that briefly, I think there was a question about what happens if state law changes? Will these standards be repealed? And the way that this was written, we formatted the use table so that these new uses are only allowed in these new zones to the extent that state law requires it. If state law changes and they no longer require these uses in these new zones, then we revert back to our existing use table, correct? And our, and the objective standards will still be in place, but the ability to come in under a law like AB twenty-eleven may change if state law changes.
Thank you.
Chair Rosati, I have a couple more.
Please.
Clarifications to the commenter on the R-one-H exclusion from non-residential zones. That was on Exhibit Two to Attachment A, Page One, and that was a little oversight. We just missed it, so we'll make sure that is corrected moving forward to include R-one-H. And then there was also a question that had come through about CUP requirements for other land uses as part of mixed use development. AB twenty-eleven doesn't excuse you from having to go through a CUP for the land use. It only allows or requires the city to allow the structure to be built, but whatever use goes into that structure still has to go through the city's permitting process. So say, for example, someone wanted to sell alcohol at a convenience store as part of a mixed use development, they have to obtain that CUP for the alcohol sales, but we have to allow the development of the structure to be filled with whatever use is allowed.
Does the commission have any questions for staff? Mr. Alrick?
I had a question, but I think you answered it already. Basically, if someone applies for a housing project in these zones with the S allowed by state law as amended, they would have to use that, like AB eleven or SB thirty-five. They can't apply without those laws, correct?
Correct. The intent there was, to the extent that we are required to permit these uses in these zones by state law, that's where we are permitting it pursuant to state law.
Okay, and I think that AB twenty-eleven and SB thirty-five exclude, what is it? Industrial from their projects, but we have our industrial applied here. So why is that?
So Greg Mirzavaki, our associate planner, will respond to that question.
Good evening, Greg Mirzavaki, Associate Planner, Planning Division. There is actually a requirement in SB, in AB twenty-eleven, that the site isn't a site or adjoined to a site where more than a third of the square footage is dedicated to industrial use, and that is defined as a site that is currently being used as an industrial site was most recently permitted or was designated as an industrial use, which is defined in the statute and the latest version of the general plan. And industrial use is defined as use that includes utilities, manufacturing, transportation, storage, and maintenance facilities, and warehousing uses. So to the extent that the statute defines industrial use, if the adjacent site or the site itself does not contain a third of the square footage dedicated to industrial use, it's potentially still allowed to be developed with a mixed use or residential project if it does not meet those qualifiers that I mentioned earlier.
For AB twenty-eleven, but not for SB thirty-five?
I believe SB thirty-five does not include that language.
So the difference being, under SB thirty-five, if the general plan allows a residential use on a zone, including industrial, then under SB thirty-five, you can submit a development proposal for residential on an industrial zone lot. That's why you have them submitted on Empire, that's why you have them submitted at nine-ten Mariposa.
Okay. Well, I thought that the general plan was different from the zone, like a zone text amendment.
The general plan.
There's a difference between zoning and general.
The general plan is the overarching master plan document that oversees how things are to be developed over time. The zoning regulations are the implementation tool to that master plan document.
So are we amending the general plan?
No, no, no. So this is the difference because I think SB thirty-five and AB twenty-eleven, we need to kind of, even though they're following similar processes, the requirements and the conditions upon which you apply for one or the other are not exactly the same. So in the case of SB thirty-five, there's language in the statute and in our ordinance that in those areas where there is conflict between the zoning and the general plan, if residential is allowed in the general plan, then you're allowed to submit an application for residential development. That is the case at Pickwick, that is the case at the industrial sites on Empires. They have industrial. When you go and look at the list, it doesn't list residential. However, when you go to the general plan, it references you back to the zoning, it references in the zoning code a consistency table that is derived directly from the general plan. Residential is allowed there, and residential density is also allowed in the general plan at that location under its land use designation. So it's actually in both locations, but when you look at the land use table, I could see how people could be confused because it doesn't specifically list residential as a use there. And this has already, and this has already been kind of debated and come to a conclusion by the adoption of the council's SB thirty-five ordinance.
So then why are we not amending the general plan and we're amending the zoning?
Because that's a whole different discussion, and we have to deal with things like no net loss, which means that we can't just downzone or remove zoning designations on properties without, in essence, finding out where we're going to shift that established development potential to another location because that's, that would be a violation of state housing law and land use regulation. So that's why we're not doing that. What we're doing now is what's allowed in the statute under AB twenty-eleven is to establish standards that would create objective development standards on a process for ministerial review. That's why this particular one references you to a set of standards for mixed use and multifamily. It also identifies that you'd go through a similar checklist review process as you do for SB thirty-five, and that the council, because it's an option available in the code, would take on ministerial review of AB twenty-eleven projects like they do for SB thirty-five.
So if someone applies for an SB thirty-five, can they use AB twenty-eleven standards that, that verbiage that you guys use, or it's completely separate? Okay, just wanted to make sure.
I can take that one. So those are two separate state laws, so someone could, there is not really a reason why somebody would elect to use both. SB thirty-five and AB twenty-eleven have some advantages. Each one has different advantages. For example, AB twenty-eleven allows you, if you're near transit, to up your density. SB thirty-five does not include that language, and vice versa. SB thirty-five is available on more sites in the city than AB twenty-eleven is. So there's not really a reason why somebody would want to use both of those. Does that answer the question?
Not really. My question is more so, so if they apply for an SB thirty-five, then they're not, and you're not using the verbiage from AB twenty-eleven because it says here now that it's permitted, that they're allowed to do anything that, you know, is there like a separation between the applications on here?
I think I understand where you're going. If someone applies under SB thirty-five, they have to follow the letter of that law and not use references or definitions from other laws that are outside of that process.
So it just depends on the application?
Yes.
Okay. All right, that's it, thank you.
And to the extent that there's no conflict with state law and the project is something that falls within these objective standards, so to the extent that it's multifamily residential in a commercial or in a non-residential zone or mixed use in a non-residential zone, then our local objective standards in this proposed ETA will apply to that project.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
And just to take it one step further, right now, today, if we got an application for an SB thirty-five, we'd be limited to what's on the books for that particular zone because this also includes the mix, right? When we do a mixed use project, it includes residential and commercial. It goes without saying, but in the past, when we've been able to kind of Frankenstein, development standards is under the planned developments. So you remember First Street Village and the others, but the state regulations make these things now by right, ministerial approved projects. So that's why it's important to have these standards in place because, in essence, they codify the objective standards that we now have, kind of a starting off point where everybody's on equal footing, and you have to begin the process addressing the type of, whether it's a multifamily residential only or mixed use, under the standards that are in place. So they are kind of, in essence, shoring up our regulations, which we don't have the benefit of. But to Greg's point and Amanda's point, if you're in SB thirty-five, you follow the SB thirty-five requirements. If you're in AB twenty-eleven, you follow the AB twenty-eleven. I didn't write these codes, but in the codes themselves, AB twenty-eleven references to kind of the checklist review that's in SB thirty-five.
I was going to say that, yeah.
Yeah, it's kind of very circuitous, but we got to work with the cards that were dealt. The reality of it is, in my experience with this, is the standards that staff collectively with transportation have put together puts us in a much better position because when we were reviewing the ones on Empire, and we're currently reviewing some of them, we're very limited to like what we can apply. So when people get frustrated and say, why can't we ask for more common open space? Why can't we ask for more private open space? Why is the design doesn't have modulation? Why doesn't it kind of create a better infill of a project that's more sensitive to the neighborhood? It's because those standards don't exist, and this is an effort to try to, in essence, crystallize what we've heard and take, actually, to be quite clear, to refer back to existing code in a way that provides that neighborhood context in those situations. Because I anticipate, and this is the one thing that really concerns me, is absent these standards on July first, we may get a project, let's say on Magnolia, where someone takes a whole commercial strip right adjacent to R-one, and basically if they meet certain standards, they're able to up the height, up the density, and provide very limited to no parking on site. But with these standards, at least we have a starting off point that mitigates some of that. So that's really the intent here.
Okay, thank you.
So that's kind of what I wanted to focus on, some, I want to talk about some real live examples. So question one, if we have a specific plan in place, can this project penetrate that? Could AB twenty-eleven penetrate that?
It's a nuanced question, really good, really good question, and it's a nuanced answer, so I'll let them answer that for you.
So if a specific plan was in place by 2022, yes. If they are not currently in place, they are subject to this AB twenty-eleven regulations. When the new regulations come, specific plan regulations come online, then those become the objective design standards that apply to those projects. But they were only excluded from AB twenty-eleven if you had a specific plan with objective design standards in place in 2022. So we missed that deadline.
So in essence, these projects can go anywhere.
That's, that's the concern, and that's why we needed to put in these objective standards quickly before July first to sort of head off any new applications that might be submitted, which we are anticipating will come.
So give me an example. So let's say we, we put the zone text amendment in place, and I have three parcels on Magnolia Boulevard. Can I build, what could I build? Can I go three hundred units, two hundred units?
Those numbers would depend a lot on the lot size.
But let's say.
But they can go to very high densities. They can ask for a density bonus under state law. There's a lot of different options, and they can, they would only have to comply with the commercial standards that are in place.
And how many, how many stories can they go?
They can request through the waivers to go to, you know, pretty much any height that they want.
And how much parking do they have to require?
They can request to not have any parking.
And having the zone text amendment, what would that do? What's the benefit of having the zone text amendment in my example?
So at least there will be some standards that we can try to apply that they won't waive, such as the design and modulation requirements, step-back requirements that are intended to soften those buildings so that they are not so overwhelming to the lower skilled residential neighborhoods that are next to them.
It's not a lot. So really, I mean, we're not, we're not saving any part of this city, not the Rancho, not Magnolia Park, not the Media District. We're not, we're not saving anything. This project can go in anywhere, this AB eleven, 2011.
Well, there's sites that it can go into, but SB thirty-five has a much broader applicability across the city, and these regulations would apply to those projects as well. So while it isn't a total security blanket, it is offering up regulations where there are none. So it's better than, something is better than nothing.
And Chair, if I may, nothing here, and hopefully this, maybe we weren't clear in saying this, but this doesn't stave off AB twenty-eleven applications.
Say it again.
This doesn't stave off AB twenty-eleven application. In other words, it doesn't stop them from occurring. The intent here is understanding the cards that were dealt, the fact that the legislator adopted it, that these standards would provide a starting off point for considering any sort of waiver requests or any modifications that they're going to ask for versus absent that, in some instances, in some of the commercial zones, you have zero lot lines that apply right off the bat. So we'd be starting already negotiating from zero versus in these instances having stepbacks and placement of locations where, in essence, they would have to prove up why they can't meet that standard versus what we have now is we don't even have a standard to refer them to. So I think from that standpoint, that's where we're looking at it, is we're mitigating the fact that we don't have these standards to apply to a project, and we're doing it not in the most ideal situation because it'd be great if we had, if they gave us a year to prepare for these standards, but we were given a really short window from when it was approved to here we are now, and considering every other obligation we have with four other specific plans in the queue, what you have is just that, it's a set of standards that help us in the immediate, but ultimately, I anticipate that over time, they're going to, we're going to have to update these and tweak them because statute may change, and that's what happened with us with ADU. We're like on our, I've been here since 2017. I think we're on our fourth or fifth ADU amendment, and that's because every time we... and that's because every time we modify something, the state would come back and say, "Oh, well, we removed that requirement, so now you gotta amend your code or if not, your code's invalidated." So th- those are what we anticipate. It's not set in stone, done forever. We anticipate we're gonna be having this conversation both with you all and the council in the long term on how we deal with infill development, especially as state law changes and we get more intensification because my understanding is there's a hundred more bills in the queue and that's, that's kind of been the, you know, par for the course for the last four at least, so.
Any questions for staff? Mr. Monaco?
Yeah, this is, um, from a subjective point of view, I think this is really distressing. Um, it, what, what it sounds like is you're putting all this work in and you're creating... This is an amazing, uh, review. You, you guys are great. But it sounds like we could put all the design and development standards we want, but the state can come along and say, "Not good enough. Do it and then we'll let you know if it's okay."
They, they have been doing that, I guess is the best way to put it, Commissioner Monaco, is, uh, uh, this is an, this is an ongoing debate and I think Barbara Kautz, when she made the presentation to the commission and the council, expressed it best. It's, it's, uh, the commission and the staff are in the same journey. We're, we're trying to, uh, preserve as much local control and put regulations forth so for council to consider to deal with the cards that were dealt as far as the legislative actions that have been taken. But the frustration that the community feels and the commission is expressing here, uh, Barbara mentioned that really what you need to do is advocate to the legislature uh, to preserve as much local control and let cities actually show housing production and not just kind of punish everybody, measure everybody by the same stick. And unfortunately, here we are. We're, we're trying to react to that.
Right, I mean, that's, my, my next question is, is do we take on the responsibility? We being Burbank. Now, again, I may be, I have only been here since 2019. My frame of reference is again, New York City, et cetera. Is there a way of proactively doing a development? And say, "Well, we have an affordable housing project here and this is the standards. It's an eighty-twenty, eh, 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 and the state backs off, but we've done it the way we wanna do it."
So there is a, a way, it's a big lift, as you're aware, under SB thirty-five in particular.
Right.
Um, the last time around when we were, uh, SB thirty-five was applied to us, our housing production numbers didn't meet the minimum thresholds under the statute. Uh, my recollection is in, I think it's mid, mid-cycle of our current planning,
Right.
uh, housing element, uh, planning cycle, which is six cycle. In 2025, the state will look again at the different cities' housing production numbers. And my recollection, I'll have to go back, but I think we have to basically be at fifty percent plus one
Right.
in all the different income levels to be able to consider outside of the SB thirty-five application to us. So, uh, it's a big lift. I mean, we're already in 2023. Our housing element was from 2021 and then we're, we're looking at from two years from now to basically build effectively half of eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-two units in all the, in all the different income levels, right? So it's, it's a huge lift. So I would say, uh, to be realistic, we're kind of under SB thirty-five as long as it exists and it doesn't, if it doesn't have a termination clause. I know there's some discussion about extending that timeframe past, uh, I believe it's 2026. But, but the, here we are, like, we're dealing with the cards were dealt and that is absent standards, it's just more frustration to the community.
Right.
That, it's like, well, what's, what's staff's point of reference in when these applications come in? Right now, it's very limited what we can do, but I, I would feel more comfortable with the standards in place and me, um, vigorously defending those standards and them having to, in essence, prove back to us that no, that we're exempted from that one. We're exempted from this one. I'd rather go meticulously one through each one.
Right.
Because right now, absent this, my, my focus and my, uh, purview over their project is so limited and so we end up in a situation where here we are coming to the council and saying, "This is what you get and there's not much more we can do."
So we should be looking at our watch, not a calendar. Is that pretty much what you're telling me?
Uh, we, we, uh, we need to be continuing the discussion where we create opportunities, I think, in the long term under the specific plans, where we make what the, what the community's providing as an option, an alternative that's better than what's in SB thirty-five and AB twenty-eleven. And, and what I mean by that is, uh, if we facilitate streamlined review, if we facilitate build-out with maybe increased develop, development potential and a really clear set of guidelines, if we're building up our infrastructure to accommodate that and we're doing it in a fast way, time is money. And so if you can do all those things, um, why would someone go through the regulatory hoops that they have to go through under SB thirty-five with, and then AB twenty-eleven even more restricted with prevailing wage, workforce training and all those other things? That why wouldn't they go through our process? But right now, our process is, is still in, in, in its infancy in the sense of developing the specific plan. So I think that's where your work will be very important is how do we craft things so that the community gets what they want? And that the argument that the state and, and certain advocates of this effort always tell the cities, "Oh, it's, you always put restrictions on the production of housing, so now we're forced to put this in place and force you to build housing." So I think, I think we take the opposite, right? We show our production numbers, we show how we streamline it. But, you know, that's kind of for the future. The here and now is we're dealing with this issue right here, right now and AB twenty-eleven is imminent. It's coming on July first and I, I really worry about not having standards like this in place and then just what we could get absent this alternative.
Thank you. I, I, I appreciate that insight. I mean, I'm, I'm learning as I'm going up the curve here. Is there such a thing as Burbank Housing Authority?
There is Burbank Housing Corp. Um, so yeah, there's, they're, they're working on that effort, but to say they're gonna solve our problem?
We have, so in other words, we have some sort of, I hate that term, infrastructure in place that if we wanted to start doing this on our own and come up with a plan and we are the ones that control the land, we control the project and we're adhering to the economic slash financial aspects of the deal. In other words, we're meeting standards for affordable housing, et cetera. If we can do that, we can sort of like beat them to the punch. Is that right?
If, if you could come up with half of eighty-seven, eight, eighty-seven, eight, eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-two units in all the income levels on city-owned land, uh, you, you, you'd have made, uh, a phenomenal, uh, production of housing.
Right.
And maybe that, and maybe that's a, a good step, but, but the reality of it is, it's a, it's, it is, we, we understand it's a heavy lift. The city collectively, when we, when the council approved the housing element, understood that the production numbers are a huge ask and to the point where the community, we still have to assess this, right? Uh, what's the impact to infrastructure? What's its impact to, how is it gonna integrate into the, into the different neighborhoods or adjacency to neighborhoods? That's why the specific plans are so important because the idea was there where the city would be able to maintain local control. And, but with that said, outside of the specific plans, this AB twenty-eleven application, is that other set of regulations to in essence kind of bridge the gap in the corridors between the specific plan boundaries and where there is nothing? Yeah.
Thank you.
Ms. Wick?
No, I was gonna ask something, but it was gonna be off-topic, so I'm, I'm good.
So having standards helps protect the neighborhood by, um, having standards that, uh, talk about parking, equestrian trails and the like? Is that correct?
Any development standard that the council approves, uh, will be helpful because it explains, oh, well, if it's an objective standard, will help explain to a developer what's expected of them as well as staff. Um, there are a lot of planning efforts currently underway and the timing of which, uh, they can't all be done in one fell swoop. Right now, what's in front of you is what we could physically bring forth, um, with a focused effort and that's the AB twenty-eleven. Council is gonna be considering, in the case of equestrian and the Rancho, they've already given a green light for Rancho's specific plan, included as part of that, our development standards. Uh, Mr. Chriskey's actually working on an equestrian trail that will actually help refine what those standards are gonna be. It's quite possible that once those standards are kind of in essence applied to a project and we have specifics, those would be objective standards and they could easily be incorporated into the other thing that I was referring to, like the chapter two to chapter one of objective development standards. So that could follow soon thereafter.
Right, and so then we'll have them, but they're not necessarily gonna be followed if the state's like, "You don't need to do that."
Well, no, I, I think we look at it this way. Uh, the stuff in the right-of-way, I think there's a much stronger case for things in the right-of-way that are codified to be followed. I, I think where they're going to really push is on what limitations you're making to the site to allow someone to build the envelope, the building envelope to accommodate the number of units that they're allowed by right to build out. That's, that's really where the focus is. So that's where they're gonna ask for relief. Uh, they're not gonna ask for relief from a sidewalk unless the argument is that, "Well, if you're reducing or pinching my building envelope, then I can't build those units." So those are the kind of things, it all has to be kind of relative to what you're doing to impact the building envelope for them to build their project under these statutory requirements. But, uh, I think we're in stronger footing to say, "Let's codify dimensions for sidewalks. Let's codify things like equestrian tail dimensions once we have those and that way at least it's there, right?" That was one of the debates, uh, during the pickwick is, "Well, why wasn't that policy applied?" Well, because we don't have it as a codified standard. So we need to codify it as a standard so then we're on the same place and say, "Okay, now we can move forward with that." So what's in front of you is, is not all-encompassing. It's the best of what we have in the immediate. But I agree with you. One of the things is that soon thereafter, we should be looking at these other things to kind of again play catch-up to Mr. Monaco's, Commissioner Monaco's point is we're, we're constantly having to chase the next thing coming from the state.
Okay, thank you.
So just to reiterate, our, our, none of our specific plans were done in time, so a project under 2011 would penetrate any, any of the, any of the neighborhoods?
Uh, with some limits there are and maybe, Amanda, it would be good to show them on the screen. If we could show on the screen the, the maps that were attached to your packet? Because I think that'll be helpful because there's some hard-line buffers that preclude this kind of development, so I think that would be helpful. You bring up a really good point, Chair, and maybe that'll be helpful for people to communicate.
So based on our understanding, um, of the law, the bill, um, we put together a map and it's in your staff report agenda packet of where we think it would apply. So that, those areas are shown here in purple.
Yeah, is there any, it's...
Yeah.
To, why, why don't you just tell us what, where these areas are?
Um, I would say they're mainly concentrated along the five freeway. Majority of the purple is there and then there's some adjacent to the one thirty-four. Uh, and then there's generally around the airport zone.
So around the one thirty-four, what, wh- where is that?
Just very little, a little bit around the one thirty-four, near the Media District.
So Amanda, may, maybe you can clarify for them. So there's two, there's two maps on the screen. There is, uh, attachment A to exhibit C, uh, page one, and then there's page two. And, uh, correct me if I'm wrong and Greg and, and Amanda collectively, but AB twenty-eleven has certain areas from which you're precluded from building, right? Also like proximity to freeway?
Yeah, I have a...
There's like a five-hundred-foot buffer. Yeah, maybe walk them through that and then we can go to...
Right.
So there is some, some, some other exclusions built into AB twenty-eleven. So I covered some of them in the presentation. We just co, talked about some of them here, but additionally, they cannot, um, require the demolition of one to four dwelling units. So you can't find a site that already has like a, a two duplexes and say you're gonna do an AB twenty-eleven there because it already has this housing. Um, you cannot demolish a listed historic resource. Um, if it's a vacant site, it can't have any tribal cultural resources and it cannot be within a very high fire, um, hazard severity zone. And, um, it can't demolish any de-restricted housing, so it can't demolish any affordable housing or senior housing. Um, and it ca, and it, uh...
So give, so, so to give my Magnolia Park, uh, example, obviously y- your map didn't show Magnolia Park on there. Uh, but you're saying it could, could happen in Magnolia Park?
So Magnolia Park could be subject to AB thirty, uh, sorry, SB thirty-five applications.
Well, what about AB twenty-eleven?
We don't anticipate or based on our current understanding of AB twenty-eleven that there is a lot that is potentially eligible.
Maybe show them the other map because there is some sections in Magnolia where it does apply.
There's sprinkled, but not, not, not large swaths of it.
Because you have commercial, right, on Magnolia?
Mm-hmm.
So if somebody assembled two, three lots, you could do it, right?
It's possible.
However, um, part of it is also proximity to transit, which is what these radii show, right?
But transit is bus lines?
But it has to meet certain minimums and is it, uh, Greg?
There's, uh, lead times.
As far as the lead time between two bus lanes?
Fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes, yeah. So it's, it's not every location, it's, has to meet, uh...
Which is why, yeah, which is why we're in the presentation. Because there's so many variables, it's almost impossible to identify for you all of the exact sites, but we'd have to look at each.
And, and that's what, that's exactly what was driving me nuts because I was kind of looking at, it was like a Rubik's Cube of trying to like figure out, can this apply, could it not apply? And, yeah, it's, it's tricky. It's, it's...
But, but one thing, if you go to page two and, and, and you all have it in front of you, if you look at, it's, it kind of looks like a river, but it's the five-hundred-foot buffer that runs along the five freeway and then the other one that goes on the one thirty-four freeway. And then you see those, those circles that kind of go along the commercial corridors. If you look at that area, there are lar, large swaths of the commercial corridor kind of from the Media District to downtown where there are potential locations. Similarly, there are locations at the intersect of Hollywood Way and Thornton in that area. There's other locations further north by Avion where there may be other potential sites. And then even portions of Glen Oaks, uh, above where we're, where we're at now that are potential sites that could be AB twenty-eleven sites. So, so there are, the big concern is there's a lot of areas that could be impacted, but we won't know specifically if that site is one until we actually look at it and apply all these different options and exceptions. But, but the concern is it could potentially result, to your point, if someone is successful in one, an area, it draws others to be like, "Oh, well, this worked here. Let's take a look and see maybe the adjoining site, maybe the site down the street." And that's, that's what we're trying to, at this point with the short amount of time that we have, is to kind of say, "Well, we need to be very conservative and anticipate where these things could happen and apply, and look at these standards effectively in these corridors." And then from there, as we go into it in greater detail, start paring down what these sites are.
So like the, the AAA site in the Rancho on Alameda?
Yeah.
Chair, if I may, um, the two grayish, uh, kind of lines along the, the freeways.
Yeah.
Uh, that is a five-hundred-foot buffer from the freeway, from the edges of the freeway that all, every single parcel in that zone would be excluded. They would not be able to build. So many of the sites that are shown, um, along the freeway, near the, within five hundred feet of a freeway would not be able to take advantage of this law. So that would, that would include many of the sites in the Media District uh, as well as downtown and closer to the airport as well.
And, and the AAA site in, uh, the Rancho on Alameda, that would be applicable, right?
It's in there.
Yeah.
And it, even though they might not be eligible under AB twenty-eleven, there are many more sites that are eligible under SB thirty-five. So these regulations would also be in place for those instances.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Ms. Monaco?
In your educated, professional opinion, I'm not gonna hold you to it, would we be in a situation where the state comes in and says, "You don't have enough development sites. You now have to start cleaning up the industrial sites so that you can build affordable housing."
Well, I, 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 I think that one's a little too theoretic for, for my liking.
Okay.
Commissioner Monaco, but, but let's give you one that is real world. Uh, that's been happening to a lot of cities that don't have a certified housing element and that's called the builder's remedy. And in the builder's remedy, uh, you can take a site even if it's not zoned for residential and propose residential development there. So what I, what I would say is we want to make sure we are following our housing plan program, including building our production numbers because, you know, the state's gonna, at, at mid, mid-cycle, we'll be tasked with reporting back to them how effective our opportunity sites were in the production of housing. And what I would hate to do is to implement things or not meet metrics that the state is expecting and have them feel like, "You know what? We're gonna have to decertify your housing element for non-compliance with what you're expected to do." Your housing element for non-compliance with what you're expected to do. God forbid that happened. Now we don't have a certified housing element. And then, I don't know if the law's gonna change, but if builder remedy is still an option, we could, you know, we could potentially get, see applications. Or even have them limit our, our building permit issuance until we figure out how to produce more housing. So. That would be detrimental to the city on, on other facets. So. I, I think we're very fortunate. One of the few cities that do, did get our housing element certified. But you're hearing of what's happening in some of these other cities with builder's remedy. All right. Any other questions for staff?
I just have a quick question. So. Are, like, for instance, like the. The specific plans won't be applicable for this cycle because they weren't in, in time. Would they be applicable the next cycle? For instance, like, does the date move up to twenty twenty four, the next cycle, or do we not know that?
Um, my apologies, uh, Commissioner Wick. So in, there's kind of a couple of things in play when we talk about timeframes. We have the housing element, planning cycle and reporting periods for the metrics there. And then there's the provisions in AB twenty eleven that were in essence, saying that if you had a specific plan by twenty twenty two. You could in essence, say in these particular areas, AB twenty eleven doesn't apply. Unfortunately, we were, we have been and are continuing to work on our specific plan. So our specific plans don't inoculate us. From having to apply AB twenty eleven. However, uh, Ms. Landry brought up the fact that once those standards are in place. Those standards would be what you would have to uh, be your starting off point. Uh, and if you're gonna apply for an AB twenty eleven or an SB thirty five. Then, then that's the standards that you would be looking at. And whether you're gonna argue, well, I'd like to get. A concession or a waiver from XYZ, those are the standards that you would be referring to in the specific plan once in place. But what it doesn't give us is that inoculation of, of saying, oh, sorry, this area, we had the specific plan in twenty twenty two. So no, no AB twenty eleven applications here. That's, that's what we don't get the benefit of.
I figured, I figured, I just thought I'd check.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, I now declare the public hearing closed. And the planning commission will now deliberate. What is the planning commission's pleasure?
I just wanted to thank you guys for this report. Did a good job. Um, I also believe having something is better than nothing. Um, still. I don't, I don't know, the M, the industrial. Um, it's hard to make a decision about the industrial, um, just because of SB thirty five and then, you know. Anyway, go ahead.
Ms. Wick, any comments?
I agree. I mean, I, I'm not gonna speak for the rest of the commission, for staff, but. SB thirty five, AB twenty eleven, it, it's challenging for all of us. Um, and to what Mr. Donahue said, that this is, this is really difficult stuff. I'm sitting up here and my background's in urban planning and I find myself Googling a lot of different things, so. It's, it's really challenging. So I would encourage everybody to just keep on asking questions for. Staff, if there's any way possible to. Just make, make it as easy as possible for residents to understand, because I think it is really important that residents understand, because it. It not only helps us down the line, it also helps you, because then maybe you won't be fielding a million calls. You probably still will be, but. I don't know, with that, with that being said, something's better than nothing. Um, that's where I stand on this.
Me, you?
You know, it's, it's just frustrating. I mean, you know, we can put a motion, you can second it and we'll vote it in and that's the way it is. We don't really have. This is what's uh, you know, what do they call it? Hobson's choice. You can hand in any color you want, as long as it's black.
Uh, I'm just gonna say that um, I, I really don't see any of the logic in any of these assembly bills and. Senate bills and it. It's defying the rules of planning and urban planning and I'm sure it's probably difficult for you guys considering you, you were educated in this field and. You know, and, and none of this really makes sense, building a four hundred unit building with no parking. Um. You know, I, I don't think that we have the infrastructure for any of this. The schools, the utility grid, the water, the infrastructure, the. Sewer capacity. I mean, the more we do this to our community, the more we destroy it. Um. You know, in twenty nineteen, when we, when we did the first major uh, ADU revision. Um, I didn't vote for it. And I brought up the fact that in nineteen eighty nine, the voters of Burbank passed measure one. Uh, slow growth initiative for condos and apartments by CUP. And, and in twenty nineteen, the current council extended measure one ten years. Um, and from what I understand, the California constitution prohibits legislation from overriding a voter approved measure. Um. So I, I don't understand why measure one isn't upheld. Um. I think that the problem is that we keep agreeing to do this stuff. And the more we agree, the more rules they're giving us from Sacramento. And the only way it's gonna stop is if we stop. And we need to challenge it and. You know, we, we, we need to take a stand. And i- it's okay to say, hey, you know what, this doesn't make sense for Burbank. You know, this doesn't make sense for our zoning and. Our master plan isn't the vision that maybe Sacramento has and, and that's okay. But we should live in the community that we wanna live in and. I'm not gonna support this. And I'm not gonna support illogical things. I'm not gonna make a recommendation to our council. To. Destroy this community. And I'll let them make the decision to. Overturn or approve this, but at some point. And I don't know how old I'll be, but at some point. I think people are gonna get tired of this and they'll. Look at our leaders, our, our congressmen, our senators, our assembly people. And say, what, what are we doing? And why are we doing this? This is not. What, the reason why I live here. And we want a say in our community. And the only way that starts. If you say no. So. I'll let uh, go ahead and take the, 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 we need a motion and a second.
I couldn't echo his, uh, Chairman Rosati's views any, any better. Um, I think it's gonna be also very, very important for you folks, because you're gonna turn it to targets. And I really feel you're gonna have to simplify this for the public. Cause you're gonna have a lot of conflicting views. You're gonna have some. Very nasty uh, demographic conclusions. And I don't know how to make that any clearer. Okay, because we had that issue. I all suggest that you look at the problem that they had in Yonkers. Where the term NIMBY actually originated. Okay, and I strongly suggest that you make this crystal clear to the populace. Because otherwise, they're gonna take this and run with it. And I couldn't agree, as I said, with Chairman Rosati more. Just, I hate to say this, but just say no. That's my comment.
We have a motion?
Sure, I'll, I'll make a motion to. Um, approve project number twenty three dash zero zero. One, two, five, eight, his own text amendment is described above and in the staff report dated April twenty third, twenty twenty three.
We have a motion?
I'll second that.
We have a second. Any more deliberation?
Sure. I do agree with you fundamentally, um. About just saying no, but I also don't want the city to be bogged down in litigation, so. I do agree with you. Um, maybe there will be the time and place to say no. I don't necessarily think. This is the issue for me. I completely respect that it's the issue for you. Um, but I'm sure we're gonna have much more spirited debates on this moving forward.
Um, I'm with Ms. Wick as well. I, I completely support everything you said. Um, but this is something that we need so that we have at least some sort of protection from the things that we have no control over. Whatsoever right now, so.
This is not projec- and, this is not protection.
It's better than nothing.
I know. This is, this is clearly something that we're doing to placate the powers in Sacramento. That has absolutely a neutral effect on us. We aren't standing up for our community. And we're not being proactive in trying to circumvent. What is gonna be forced down our throat. So, and when it comes to a vote, I guess we'll have uh.
I'm gonna acknowledge that I completely understand what staff is trying to do. And I completely understand how much work they put into this. Um, that's, I, I know that you're trying to offer some protections. But if one of these things goes in and one of my examples, then, okay, so it's. Doesn't have as much density as maybe it should, but. These, these things are killers for our community and. You know, again, it's. W- we are at a very low level. It's up for our leaders to say no. And I think, I think. I think we need to start saying no. And I think, I think no. Uh. I, I think it's okay to say no. I think it's okay to say that we don't agree. And I think we need to start having some deliberation with our leaders and say, look. We, we need some changes here, because this isn't working for us anymore. Go ahead and poll this, please.
Chair Rosati?
No.
Commissioner Elrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Monaco?
No.
Commissioner Wick?
Yes.
Now is the time for oral communications from the public. Any person speaking during this period may address the commission on any matter concerning city business. Each person may address the planning commission for a maximum time of three minutes. For members of the public who wish to comment in person, please present a completed speaker card. To planning division staff if you wish to speak. For members of the public that wish to comment by telephone, please call eight one eight, two, three, eight, three, 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 five. To address the planning board. Callers may be placed in the queue until all in-person comments have been received. The phone lines are now open. Please bear with us as it takes a couple of minutes. For the first callers to get through the line. For co- callers, please remember to lower the volume on your TV or in your computer. And take your phone off speaker when delivering the comment. Do you have any callers?
No callers.
No callers. I declared the public comment period closed. Approval of the minutes, if we had a chance to review the minutes, if we can get the appropriate motion. Was that for a public comment?
Yes.
Okay. I, I'm sorry, I didn't see you there.
I didn't know there was gonna be a third one.
I'm gonna reopen public comments so that we have the one person coming in for public comment. Thank you.
Um, good evening again, David Donahue. Um, a pleasure to be in front of you for the third time this evening. Um, I would like to support the comments made by Commissioner Monaco and in particular, um. Really echo what you said, Chair Rosati. Uh, we did disagree. I consider myself a YIMBY, um, as far as accessory dwelling units. But I do feel extremely strong about SB thirty five. It's, it's a community killer. I heard from a, a really active, also a community member in Carmenita Helagar. Who had personal experiences with projects. And she said that this is going to be a prison. These things are gonna hold people in at restricted income levels and if they make more. And then that income that keeps them in low in- low income, very low income, or you know, moderate income. You will no longer be eligible for that housing. You're basically trapped. So to be able to give some, to shed some light on the effects of what these things have to us, I think is important. And I will definitely do my part as an individual. I will, as a, the vice president of Vision Burbank, I'll advocate to our board. To support positions that give more local control. I do commend staff for their work and their effort on this presentation. I think they did a great job and they, they do have their hands tied. But again, I would like to support the efforts of uh, what, what you just said, Chair Rosati. And Commissioner Monaco for what you did. And I do respect what the other commissioners are doing. Um, I think, again, I thank you very much for your service and your perspective. It's very valuable to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. End of public comment period.
We do have one caller.
Bring him on. Open it up.
Diane, you are now live with the planning commission.
Hi, good evening, commission, Commissioner Rosati and commissioners. Um, wow, what a mess. Um, I have to agree with Commissioner Rosati. However, um, being a low income. Uh, Burbank resident for over twenty-three years, well, I was probably middle income before I got evicted and got pushed out of my. Uh, apartment of twenty-three years. Um, we have a big mess going on. Along with this, we have the district team. And um, I wanna make sure that you guys are also looking at. Um, these developers that are coming in, where they're coming from. And that no development should be done without a twenty-five percent minimum. Affordable housing required. Am I, am I on? Are you guys hearing me? Are you guys hearing me?
We're listening to you.
Did you, any other comments? Okay, I think we got the gist of that call. And the public comment is closed for the evening. Um, approval of minutes. Anyone had a chance to review the minutes, if you can make the appropriate. Motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Any comments or seeing none, go ahead.
Chair Rosati?
Yes.
Commissioner Elrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Monaco?
Yes.
Commissioner Wick?
Yes.
Motion passes. Uh, introduction of additional agenda items. Now is the time and in it to, and place to introduce. Uh, additional agenda items. Planning board members may introduce new items for discussion, but no action may take place except to place it on a future agenda. Do any members have anything to introduce? Seeing none, uh. Uh, now is the time for city planner comments. Do you have any comments?
Uh, just two, one, um, thank you guys for your input tonight. Um, the discussion was, uh, you know, helpful for us to. As this project moves forward, you know, your, your decision will be recorded and forwarded to the council. Um, just one thing, um, and we'll do a better job at this. I, I think we need to clarify. And maybe we'll go back and, and bring back kind of the duties and responsibilities of the commission versus those of the council. So I think it's important for the commission that at the end of the day, your decision is yours. But I just wanna make sure, um, and maybe we'll do a better job of kind of. Providing some guidance when it comes to the duties and responsibilities of the commission as it relates to land use decisions. And kind of beyond that, the broader scope and breadth and depth that the council has when, in considering larger policy decisions. So. Uh, you guys have done a great job, uh, as a commission to provide that area of expertise to the. To the council uh, on land use decisions where you have uh, both recommendations and, and final decisions to make unless they're appealed. But I think it, it might behoove us to, as we will talk with the city attorney, to also just kind of focus on the. But I think it, it might behoove us to, as we will talk with the city attorney, to also just kind of focus on the fact that there is kind of a, uh, I think a general understanding that, uh, the commission is not happy with, uh, the state imposing regulations on you. Uh, and while doing so, though, I think, uh, we heard two sides of the frustration in the sense of, you know, making a recommendation as a planning commission on land use decisions so that the commi- the council can at least hear those, uh, land use requirements and see uh, how effective or not they are, and whether they want to proceed with them or not. And then there's implications beyond that as to what happens if they don't, or do. Uh, but I would encourage you all, um, that, there's still that dialogue, right, with the council members and with the legislature, so I don't, I, I, I hear frustration on both sides, but I would want to say just as residents, you also have the right to bend the ear of a legislator and, and give them the perspective as a commissioner and as a resident of the loss of local control. And, um, and the fact that, you know, I think overall, uh, the commission in particular, uh, in the last six years, has a very good record of approving housing. So, um, it's kind of tough when you're measured, everybody's being measured by the same stick, people that don't want to do, uh, you know, really adamantly don't want to do housing, and then here you are, you've done quite a bit to move the needle in a positive direction. So I commend you, I empathize with the frustration, and, um, just wanted to make sure, you know, we, we hear you from both sides. And, uh, that does, that record of that information will also be communicated to the council. So I wanted to make sure I reemphasize that, because sometimes it's lost, um, in this process, but, but it's, your words and your feedback do matter to us. Uh, the public is hearing as well. And we'll have a updated, you know, community meeting, where we hear more feedback, I think that'll be helpful as well. And then eventually take that, all that information to council at a future meeting date. So I wanted to just kind of close that loop on that. The other thing too is, uh, um, I know a lot of the public will go to you all as a group to give you feedback on a particular project. Um, it would be helpful when you get a chance, and I know sometimes they're giving you, you may be getting emails like last minute before you're walking in the door, so I totally understand that. But where you can, uh, forward that information to us, even if it is just electronically, that would be helpful, just so that, um, we can print it out and give it to the whole commission. So sometimes, um, you know, it's good for you to have that info, but then I also want to make sure that if we get it as public information, that we make it available to the public. So where you can, uh, or if you have constituents that aren't a regular, provide you with feedback on items, please, uh, we, we can be communicated as well, or just forward it to us when you get a chance, but that would be helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say that's never happened before, and I was literally, I just had a, a day today, and those, some of those emails came in like around four o'clock
I hear you.
when I was in meetings, so I didn't have a chance.
It's not a, it's not a, it's not a knock on you, sir, it's just more
Yeah.
uh, in general, um, you know, like, uh, even when you have an inquiry of, of, of us, we always want to make sure we kind of share it with the whole group and vice versa.
Absolutely.
So where, where you can, and maybe I'm just kind of purposely saying it, uh, on TV, is if you do have a question, by all means, please, uh, send it to us. You can send it electronically to the project planner, or give us a call. Would love to get, you know, give you feedback or give you some additional information. And then if you still want your comments communicated, uh, I, I wouldn't negate someone from communicating with you directly, by all means. But as soon as we get it, even if it's last minute, you know, we'll, we'll have somebody print them out and get them to you guys, so just where we can. Uh, let's just keep those lines of communication open, public and, and commissioner-like. So thank you very much.
Great. We now adjourn the planning board meeting to Monday, May eighth, twenty twenty-three at six PM. The meeting will be held in person in the city council chambers at two seventy-five East Olive Avenue. The public is invited to attend the meeting in person, or view the meeting online, or on television. The public will be able to provide public comment in the following three ways: in person at the meeting, or by leaving an e-comment, or by calling directly the planning commission meeting at eight one eight two three eight three 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 five. Thank you all for your participation.